Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, a member of the Finance Committee and the Chair of the Finance Committee, sub-Guidelines Subcommittee and speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee. So, since this is public comment and I have a short interval to introduce this concept, I'm not going to spend a lot of time because I just don't have it. About a year ago, our current Chair, Tom Tarpe, was the Chair of the Guidelines Subcommittee and he introduced the concept into the Finance Committee of Fiscal Sustainability as a guided principle for how we are trying to financially bring the town from one year to the next. And that has, we formed a subcommittee, the Fiscal Sustainability Working Group. They have met for over a year now and they are looking at macro indicators of finance to sort of give us a clue, how is our tax burden stacking up against the kinds of things that people face in their daily lives and in their financial picture. This includes things like the Consumer Price Index, interest rates as indicated by Treasury yields, and also wage indicators. There's a survey called the National Compensation Survey which tracks both fiscal compensation and also wage growth. So, what you have in front of you is a chart of those three lines, wage growth, basically compensation growth, indicator of what interest rates have been bearing over since 2007, and the growth of CPI. And you can see our tax bill, our median tax bill, is outstripping these tremendously. So, we have to be conservative in our view that our tax bill has to be reined in to a degree if we're going to maintain a fiscally sustainable policy for the town. We do watch the indicators from the town surveys. One of the most important things that the town values, education is always at the top of the list, but right behind that is town character and taxes. And those kind of have flipped back and forth over the last couple of years, but those two characteristics are, you know, an indicator that these are stressors in the town. These are concerns. We have, we've taken up policies to try to maintain the character, the physical character of the town to prevent mansonization, to slow, you know, community and neighborhood growth and contain the size of homes because we want to maintain the character, but that's because of the financial pressure of wealth and people's desire to, you know, build larger homes on smaller lots. Those are administrative things we can do, but what the Finance Committee is concerned about is the fiscal things we can do. And our tax burden is a driver of what kind of town we want to be in, what kind of town we are going to be. And as you see in these charts, it is growing at a rate that is much outstripping some basic macro indicators. So, I'm just going to leave you with that. We are working forward towards trying to come up with a sustainability indicator that we will use to guide us in our guidelines process going forward. This year, we're kind of still working through it, but this, we're getting closer and closer to coming through with some sort of number. A small indicator that you folks need to sort of reckon with is when we talk to you about your budget and what you want to do, okay? It's not our purview to concern ourselves with whether you need another school bus or, you know, two new teachers or a new program or rebuild a section of Ripley to manage a new program. That's not really our concern. Our concern is, can we afford it as a town? Is what we're doing survivability, you know? So, if you have to keep a lid on things and make choices, those choices are your choices. They're really not our choices. So, to present us with a slate and have us go, "Oh, my goodness, you really need all this money", that's your slate. But our slate is driven by these kinds of lines which are kind of getting beyond us and they have been for a few years. So, I think I've overstuffed my three minutes, so I'm just letting you know. We're working through this. It's part of our ongoing process at the Finance Committee and as we evolve it, we are working towards something we're just calling fiscal sustainability.
Dean?
Yeah?
I have a question.
Yeah?
On your chart, the one-page chart.
Yep.
There's a scale here for a dollar of median tax.
I'll try to answer that as quickly as I can. The way this chart was derived, each of those three lines, if they were taken independently, CPI would be like a percentage number or the Treasury Bill would be a percentage number. So, what they were all scaled back to was the same start point and then those lines were then just put onto, layered on to the same scaled chart, to be as simple as I can. So, you can see in the second page what the underlying values of those are. So, if you see, you know, CPI, you'll see individual annual CPI growth as percentage numbers. So, if you take the original tax bill, which in 2007 is $7,886, okay? The median tax bill, if you're looking on page two, okay? That's the start point that we use for all of these numbers and then we apply the CPI cumulative to create the CPI line. And then we use the Treasury rate to create the Treasury bill line. So, we just applied that to the baseline, 7,886 number as a start point and then each of those lines grows out from there based on the percentages that those things are growing in. Does that help you, Wally?
No.
Okay.
I mean, if I were Treasury, it would be flat.
How about you, Carl? If you look at the one, two, three, four, five, six line down across where it says tax bill median if grew with CPI, okay? So, that's really explains what the mechanism is. Take the, from the tax bill in 2007 and we grew it at the CPI rate to get the CPI line, same thing essentially with the other one.
What is the Inclined Cost Index?
The Inclined Cost Index comes from something called the National Compensation Survey. It's regionalized. I believe it's, I believe these numbers are for New England and they track two different metrics. One is total compensation growth and the other, which includes all benefits, and the other is wage growth. So, I believe this one is compensation growth, but yields.
Actually, for Newton, Cambridge, and Boston area.
For all incomes?
Yes.
Yes. Well, it's, it's an employment, it's an employment sort of, it's for an employer mostly, like what do I have to pay to get an employee? And so, what's the growth rate of compensation that's being operated?
Are there any median income numbers for Concord?
We have, we have some data that we can get from something called the American Something Survey which is run by the Census Bureau. They have five-year data and it does include Concord and they do break out income growth. They also have household, what we consider to be the cost of housing and that is something that we are trying to look at kind of closely because anybody who's spending more than 30% of their income is considered under housing stress. If you're over 50% of your, of your income, of your household income spent on housing, you're in extreme housing stress. So, those are numbers that we have a little bit of, we have, we have a lot of interest in them. We have not as much insight into them as we would like probably, but we are looking at those as well.
Thanks.
Because we're concerned about housing stress as being a, you know, something that might be pushing people out or, you know, we, to be quite frank about that, some people put themselves into housing stress very voluntarily. They want to move to Concord, they want to live here and they're willing to stretch to be here, but then if taxes continue to increase, they become in the stress category. And so, they're here because they chose to, because they want access to the school system, to the services that town, that Concord has, but they put themselves into that situation on a voluntary basis, but it's still stressful. So, the taxes contributed.
I think those income numbers would be important for this.
So, I would love to have a thorough conversation with Heather.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a three-minute public comment.
Yeah. No, and I think it's really, it's very interesting and I think it's a further kind of, obviously, a lot of work went into this and there are a lot of questions. It would be worthy of much more conversation. I don't want to cut it off because it's not worthy of its time at some point, but we do have stuff we want to get through before the regional members come.
I understand, I understand we're coming into this public comment. We just, we took a vote at the FinCom to say, "We need to get you guys aware. We need to be out in front of you", so here we are.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Right, thanks.
And my next question. Okay, we're going to go to reports and discussion, CMS Capital Projects. This is something that Heather will summarize for us. We spent some time, Jared, Heather, myself, Lori, and Ian kind of going over the middle school buildings in that discussion and what we've learned and what we learned a while back, which Heather was pioneering, leading. This is the same thing. So, these documents will help. These are documents you've seen before, we're just going to use them for reference. Everybody have those? All right, so I'll jump in, thank you. So, as Joanna said, this is something we're starting to look at in terms of facilities needs at the middle school over the next few years. So, I want to just kind of start with big picture. As Joanna said, we met Joanna, Lori, Jared, Ian and I just to start to look at what's the reality of what we might have to deal with in these middle school buildings over the next few years, to just kind of set the stage and timeline. As everyone knows, we have not heard yet from MSBA on whether we are invited into their funding process this year, but even if we are, we are at least four years out from a new building and we don't even know if we're invited in. So, we're assuming a baseline of at least four to five years out from a new building. We have to assume at least four to five years in these two buildings. One thing that we all wanted to just start and base the conversation with was the reminder to ourselves even that we need to maintain the current facilities enough to create a fulfilling middle school experience for students until then. Probably three different classes of kids will still have their entire middle school experience in these buildings. And we're in Concord and they expect the best and we need to give them that, even if the buildings aren't the best. So, we went back, what we want to do really is figure out what's necessary. What do we really have to do to keep these buildings at least viable for the next four to five years? We went back and looked through these lists. So, most of you will recognize these when we did the facility study with Feinbold Alexander a couple of years ago. The two spreadsheets in front of you are one for each building and they're broken out as required actions, recommended, and optional. Now, the first and really most important thing to keep in mind as we look at these is this list was to answer the question of if we were to stay in these buildings on a long-term basis, that's anywhere from 10 to 50 years, but if we plan to stay in them for a long time, what would we need to do? And that's what the answers to these questions are. So, just to clarify for everybody here, because I know there are a bunch of questions, required actions is not a list of things that we absolutely have to do in these buildings or we're going to be out of code or anything. It's if we were to stay in the long term, this is what we really have to deal with. An example, something like a new roof, if we might need a new roof in 10 years, well, if we're going to stay in the building, we would have to deal with that. But if we're going to tear the building down in five years, we're not going to put a new roof on it. So, just to clarify kind of what that required action list is. Now, I'm not going to go through this list in detail. That's what we spent time doing as we were looking at facilities needs and we will come back and talk in more detail. What this is today is really just kind of a quick update on, this is where we are, this is the discussion that we've had, and this is the discussion that we will come back and have here soon in more detail. So, it's really more of a, it's a quick status update, not a detailed discussion on what we're going to do about facilities. So, what we came to was, I would say overall, good news. As we went through this list of even the required actions, there were not a lot of things that jumped out that we have to do right away. In fact, the things that jumped out as necessities are things that are already on our radar already. So, there's another piece of good news for us all. There's nothing here that we've been neglecting that's a surprise and now all of a sudden we have to deal with. Anything that does need to be dealt with has been on our radar and as opposed to replacing, like it may suggest here, we might be able to fix or upgrade to keep it going for a few years. An example, something like the fire alarm system. We've already talked about that. We know we had some issues at Sandborne earlier. It is to code now, it's what it needs to be, I don't want to make anybody scared. We do think it needs an upgrade and that's something that we might want to do in order to stay in the building for five years, just as an example. So, we went through and have kind of a basic, a basic list of the big items and the next step really is that Lori and Jared are going to go take that list now that they have a few budget items behind them and go through those in more detail and come back to us with a list that we can really discuss. What we'll be discussing is what goes on our warrant article for December, well, for April, but that's due in December. The reason it becomes a quick discussion now is that really the other thing that we came to in this meeting is if we're going to be putting money into these buildings for anything that's to last us the next five years, there's really no sense in waiting. There's no point in waiting a year or two and then investing in the building. If we're going to do it, for the most part, we might as well do it right away. So, the general thought, and again, we're not going to get into specific items and how much at this point yet, but the general thinking coming out of our discussion was whatever it is we decide is necessary for these buildings, there's a good chance we might come back and say, "We think we should do it this year". So, our capital expenditures or CPS this year may be more weighted towards the middle school than they have been in a while. And that's just kind of the general direction of thinking right now. The other thing, oh, and the other thing that we added to this in terms of anything that needs to be worked on in addition to what Feinbold Alexander came up with was anything that has come up in terms of needs for reconfiguration. So, Justin has also given some input on what he may need and that's pretty much what we're looking at.
Yeah, I think my final comments, aside from your thorough ones, are just in terms of aesthetics and really that's not as captured here in making sure we're creating a really enjoyable learning environment and so, needs that come to mind immediately are rugs and paint and just fixing up the place so it looks like we're taking care of it because I think there's trickle down to that when it feels dingier and the rugs have big seams that are ripped up and it looks uncared for and that sends a message. So, knowing it's four to five years out, now would be the time to consider that. It's not as easy as it sounds. Asbestos management, things like that are a big part of the rug discussion, but I do think that's becoming some of the priority here is to invest in the environment itself so that it's as good of a learning environment as we can possibly make it for what it is.
Yeah, I would only add, Brian Schlegel was also at the meeting. He's a real expert on these buildings and the facilities right now. So, he essentially was charged with eventually kind of putting the cumulative list together with Lori and Jared of, "This is what we really think will do it" and to be able to have a more, you know, in-depth conversation about where everyone, you know, lands on that coming down the pike as we get closer and hopefully for, ready for warrants articles, warrant articles.
I have a question.
So, that's what I was just going to ask for.
So, I agree with the assessment, things like the fire alarm system, we should do that now versus wait two years for one reason, we know that it should be done. I assume that there are some things that if they fail, would have to be replaced to inhabit the building on this list? And I think, you know, there's a gauge there of how long does it take to fix it? How incremental is the failure? And how long does it take to fix it? In the sense that if it failed, could we fix it in two days versus is it something we got to move out of?
To say, "Cost us more in, right."
And are there, so are there things there that we should have a contingency for in a monitoring of so that we are prepared to cover the cost and implement it to fix if needed, but also thinking prospectively about another building? So, you know, I would, it seems to me there are some of those things. I mean, if the roof's going to last seven years, then it might only last three. So, we need to be prepared for that. The aesthetics are a decision we make and I come down on the slide that makes sense. So, you know, I don't think it's so cut and dry, you know, there are things that we want to do right now and things that...
Oh, no, it's not.
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean to make it sound like it's cut and dry. It's not a easy decision. I would think, your question, are there things like that? I would say yes, absolutely. There are lots of things that we're going to have to make a judgment call on. I'm only, I'm not getting into them now because, because this is kind of an update mid-process. So, we had the initial, you know, the initial run-through of this list at a high level, what kind of issues are we looking at? And those are the kind of discussions that we will have to have next time when we come back, when we have a more detailed list.
Again, the reason I bring it up now is I hope as the list gets created, there's a, that's a segment of the list.
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
Definitely.
Definitely. That septic system keeps me up.
Right.
So, really what I hear you saying is you want a risk profile on some of these.
Yep.
And if I'm correct, the MSBA and the warrant timetable are not going to be comfortable with each other. We're going to have to move ahead on our discussions here regardless of...
So, our hope is they barely complement each other. I'm expecting a call from MSBA at the end of the month.
End of the month, hopefully.
Which will give us the month of December to turn around warrant articles reflective of that. It's not much wiggle room and we've tried to strategize that as much as we could by having two meetings in December and getting ahead of this discussion. The feasibility study is a big part of that debate. So, it's not, it's not, nothing's getting eliminated because we should hear by the first of December.
Good.
And, I mean, this is another thing, now that the budget is created in a big beautiful binder, even starting to create that warrant article for a feasibility study is something that we should have, we should be starting to get it ready so that if we're invited in, we're ready to submit the warrant article.
Absolutely.
You know, if we're not, then we have to move another direction. But we need it ready so that if we are invited, we have one to submit to the warrant.
Now, I heard you, Heather, you don't want to get into too much detail tonight, which I certainly understand. Could you speak briefly to the reconfiguration and what is significant here for future years? Which means we're not ready for September in that regard. I know we have the basics in place.
Yeah, we've been actually vetting, I'll grab that, this one, if I can. We've been vetting that, Justin's been very actively looking at all of this. He's actually getting a big lead on the schedules because the schedule's going to drive all of the physical needs. Some things we identified very early, the biggest one on that list was a science lab at Sandborne, so we have enough access. We actually got ahead of that last summer and put tile in one of the rooms downstairs so this summer we can put the lab stations themselves in. So, I feel like we're in good shape on that. It looks like, according to Justin, as of 7 o'clock last night, since he spent his weekend building a schedule, that he can map out where people will go and we seem to be in good shape. So, there's a lot of early work being done here, so we have no surprises. So, in terms of facilities, parking's probably the one last dangling piece is making sure we've added enough spaces at Sandborne to accommodate the additional staff that'll be there. But we're feeling pretty comfortable.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to sync timelines up so that we don't identify needs after budgets and warrant articles or time.
There's a lot going into these, and hopefully a lot more for the next meeting, you know?
Yeah, we will do the best we can. I'm sort of processing the time of year. We're in here, we have a short week this week and a short week next week, but hopefully we can bring you another stage of this list and keep it moving in the right direction.
Great. All right, now the mid-process, I mean, there will be more to discuss.
Soon.
Future date, soon, exactly. All right, drum roll please. And now, it's going to be exciting. Thank you, Jared, for your countless hours. You've all worked, but this has been an incredible project, so we're
Good, good.
Really excited and also appreciate all that work.
Thank you. While he's loading it up, I'll just summarize. We met with the administrators this morning and showed them where we landed. I'm not sure, we're all like impressed with each other. It's just been a real collective effort for them to see the big picture outcome. We are bringing you a budget that we know is incredibly solid. There's room left. We built in contingencies and identified them as such, but very reasonably, every other dollar is accounted for. I do think coming in, we're going to, again, right up till last night, we're, you know, debating what these last numbers are and the final takeaways. I think because it's so solid and so tight and when you see how we came in with a reasonable number despite to me really large cost drivers. I don't know how much room there is to negotiate here. You're going to see we're within a few decimals of a percentage point within the guideline. So, I just want to sort of frame that for you going in that this one's not got too much room for discussion, but hopefully the number's so reasonable, that's okay. And he can answer anything you want to ask him, so go right ahead.
This is our chance to try to stump Jared, huh?
Yeah, no, he's un-stumped, he can't be stumped. All right, all yours.
Perfect. So, I'm going to be reading a lot because there's a lot of numbers and there's a lot of important information I really don't want to miss, so pardon that. So, this has been six months, six months' worth of work, 100-plus people involved with it, collaborative effort, and I really think both budgets turned out really, really the way that I wanted them to. So, without further ado, so I'm going to be talking some redundancies in both presentations and some things you heard before, but for the people that are hearing about zero-based budgeting for the first time, I'm going to talk a little bit about it and what we did. So, zero-based budgeting is a method of budgeting in which all expenses must be justified. Zero-based budgeting starts from a zero base and every function is analyzed for its needs and costs. During the past four months, principals, administrators, department heads, and school staff have reviewed all of the 512 budget lines in the FY19 budget and built FY20s from scratch.
Sorry, Jared, I don't mean to interrupt, but I am. Is it okay for everyone that can hear or should Jared have a microphone?
Here, sorry for you.
Okay. Just, okay, I want to be sure, because we're just starting, I want to be sure it's being captured.
Some of the font is a little small, but it gets bigger. I had that complaint today already, so. So, during the past four months, principals, administrators, department heads, and support staff reviewed all of the 512 budget lines in the FY19 budget and built FY20s from scratch. Again, it was a collaborative effort and it worked because everybody bought into it. We were able to consolidate many lines and FY20's budget was reduced by 72 lines to 440. I expect FY21's budget to be even more reduced. Some of the highlights of what was reviewed included three to five years' worth of looking at legal salaries, including FTEs, steps, columns, longevity, stipends, overtime, substitutes. We looked at contract services, memberships, fees, and PV in all aspects of special education. We then reviewed supplies, materials, textbooks, equipment, software, and hardware. We continue to take a deeper dive into our contractor copiers and cellphones, but we've already identified the redundancies. And we recently hired a transportation consultant to see if we can do things more efficiently and help us with the sustainable 10-year bus replacement cycle. The superintendent's Concord Public Schools recommended budget for FY20 is $39,390,163, which is a 2.99% higher budget than FY19 School Committee approved. The chart on this slide is by DESI 1000 Function. As you can see, I broke down FY20's recommended budget and compared it to FY18 School Committee budget, FY18's... FY18's transferred budget, FY18's actuals, the delta between the actuals and FY18's transferred budget, FY19's school committee approved budget and the difference between FY19's budget and FY20's requested. There are some large drivers, such as instructional leadership and large reductions, including district leadership and admin and programs with other districts. But it's important to note that on this slide, instructional leadership is up 3.47% from FY19 budgeted, but it's actually up 10.01% or 2.7 million from FY18 actuals. Other school services is increasing 11.76% in FY20 mainly due to the increase in special ed transportation. We saw a decrease in the FY19 transportation costs, but we came, came back down to earth a bit in FY20. We're currently working with Case Collaborative on ways to forecast large swings like this. The increase in fixed charges is due to the early retirement incentive. So instead of breaking down the budget drivers by DESI function, I broke them down by an expense category, which is a bit new. Uh, these categories include contingency, contract services, equipment, legal, teacher longevity, teacher stipends, maintenance, memberships, overtime, professional development, admin manager salaries, teacher salaries, tutor salaries, clerical salaries, maintenance custodial salaries, et cetera. All salaries have their own category. Other expense categories include supply materials, textbook curriculum, substitutes, utilities and many more. In all, I created 32 different expense categories for the CPS side and the drivers on this slide are the biggest ones in the FY20 budget. The contract service category is increasing 15.53% due to, due to a number of reasons. One, which will be a common theme throughout this presentation and the next one. We did an audit of every account and things in the past may have been a contract service, um, but may have been paid out of a different account. Special education contract services are going up 103,000 due to current and FY20 needs and also the expense type we are now charging them to. Maintenance contract services are increasing 66,000. And lastly, case special ed transportation costs are increasing 113,000. Employee separation costs are going up 198%. This may be a bit misleading for a number of reasons. We expect to fill all the employees who are taking the incentives at a savings of approximately $30,000. We budgeted all teacher vacancies at 75,000 and we expect the average new hire to be around this range. The savings are budgeted in different expense, expense categories such as teachers. So that there's an expense here, there's a saving in the teacher's lines, uh, for those people taking the incentive. This is the first year we budgeted the known early retirement incentive, which came to be about 233,000. Also, contractually, we have a sick leave buyback obligation and that is increasing 52,669 dollars in FY20's budget. Aid salary
Jared, sorry, one quick question on this one.
Please.
Because you said you created 32
Thirty-two.
categories. Each of those encompasses various DESI categories, though.
Correct, yeah, so the same categories have the same function.
Okay.
But some may have, uh, some categories might have multiple DESI functions.
Yes, so you haven't, you're not, not using, you're just kind of applying some DESI ones to make it more clear.
Correct. I thought it would be easier to do it as an expense category to talk about DESI 100 functions.
Right.
No one really knows what this is.
Perfect, thank you.
Just one last comment on the separation incentive. He's got a slides couple, a little bit further in that shows the overall, um, costs and savings to that program and I think we feel pretty strongly it was highly successful. So we've got, you know, bits of expense to incur for the short term, but the long-term savings are fairly dramatic, especially at the CPS side. And just the longevity piece he mentioned, that we were gonna pay to these folks whenever they're retired. So that's really not an additional cost versus the incentive, which is something we provided to them, to, to offer them.
Yeah, the reason why I, I put that in the category of separation and that's why I drove it up. Aid salaries are going up 11.8%, not necessarily because we hired a lot more aides, unless a tutor's position was doing this function in the past and it made more sense to hire an aide at a reduced cost, but because there were many aides that were being paid out of incorrect accounts, such as the tutor accounts. Therefore, you will see an increase in aides percentage, but you will see a drastic decrease in the tutor percentage, again, because we cleaned up these accounts. But it's important to note that DESI recognizes tutors, aides and paraprofessionals in the same reporting function. So we were not reporting these incorrectly to the state in the past, this is just a housekeeping thing. Substitute lines have increased 95.9% because DESI has created a new function for long-term substitutes. Instead of charging a long-term substitute salary directly to the teacher's line that they are replacing, DESI created a function, um, so long-term subs can be reported. This is not necessarily a cost increase because contingencies were put into salary lines themselves for this very reason in the past. Budgeting long-term subs is a guess and oftentimes you, you see a savings because the person going on leave is at a higher step and column than the person that they're replacing. We are currently about to enter contract negotiations with the CTA, but the contract expiring includes a double-step raise for every teacher that is not on the top of his or her scale. For example, if you are currently a master's step six, this fiscal year, you will be placed on a master's step eight to begin FY20. This is a contractual increase and does not include a cost of living increase that is about to be bargained. There is a budgeted increase in these lines for contract negotiations and we expect there to be parity between the CTA and the CCTA. Teacher salaries account for $22,537,742 of the $39,390 FY20 requested budget and 96% of the FY20 recommended increase. The amount budgeted for teachers is, in FY20, is $2,40236 more than FY18 actuals. Supplies and materials are going up 51.47%, but that is mainly due to the way that we budgeted these items differently than in the past. We consolidated a number of supply, equipment and even contract service lines. We also bumped up the elementary schools to where they were prior to the FY19 budget. In fact, the amount requested for supplies and materials is only 111,000 more than was spent on these minds in FY18 and that does not include any supply of material, material expense that may have been, um, spent in the wrong category. The amount recommended is more on par with our historical spending.
Jared, can I just, most of that increase, that 111,000 is everyday math? Um, that was a purchase that was made for three years' worth at a time when it was initially implemented three years ago. We're working with the publisher to spread that out, but essentially the, the differential isn't just that one program.
Was that you had to wait and have to pick or until three years or?
So everything was front-loaded, so we bought three years' worth of everything at the beginning. So we've had a couple of years of
Yeah.
no cost, essentially, in theory.
Yeah.
And now we need to build in a sustainable number that allows the program to stay running.
Thanks.
The increase in clerical salary is contractual in putting staff in the correct accounts. The increase in maintenance, custodial and transportation is also contractual, but the increase is also driven by new custodial FTE in the Sandborne that is needed to keep up with the needs of the building. So overall, we identified 2.6 million in budget drivers in this budget. And they were offset by some costs, uh, cost savings. So we identified 1.599 million in cost savings. Um, a small one, but worth noting was the legal. Over the summer, the district advertised an RFP for a new school committee in special education lawyer. By doing so, the rate went from $1,100 per hour to 210. We anticipate the cost savings to be at least 17%, but most likely more. Through attrition and some rearrangement in some departments, such as in human resources, we are saving approximately 38,000 in non-union personnel salaries and another 82,000 in support staff. Our largest cost saving is in the tutor's line. This is, again, is misleading. Through the zero-based budget process, we identified staff that were budgeted in these lines that should not have been, mostly aides, and moved them to the appropriate accounts. In addition, tutor salaries are now budgeted according to the contracted amounts and we encumbered the yearly obligation currently in our payroll operating system. So now I know exactly when people are working more than their con, their contracted amount. There are times that tutors will, of course, need to work more than their contracted amount, but we now have a better idea of what our obligations are. Also, we hired aides in places where tutors were doing the aides' work, like I said. And lastly, the FY20 recommended amount for tutors is only 221,000 less than the FY18 actuals, not 748K that it may seem here. Our last, uh, large cost driver is special education tuitions. The special education department and the business office are in constant contact almost every day so that we are on the same page with our tuition obligations. We also took a zero-based approach and identified every student's costs and all periphery costs. Through the good work of the special education department in the schools, we're providing more services to our students to keep them in district. This is the reason for some of our increased contractual service costs, but a big reason for a decrease in out-of-district tuitions. Also, we anticipate to have at least 150,000 in circuit breaker carryover from FY19, which will allow us to lower the tuition costs in this general fund budget. You will notice in the line item budget, we have an offset of 950,000 in the FY20 budget. Again, 150 of that is coming from FY19's carryover. At this time, our total anticipated out-of-district tuitions for FY20 is $3,134,043, which is 716,000 less than FY19's budgeted amount. But as you know, special education's a moving target very soon.
And is that largely those tuitions kids who are graduating out or we brought back in to the?
It's more of just, it's everything. It's, but it's looking at every single kid, what our obligation is, uh, are there any potential to be determined? Um, also what we have in other revenues such as circuit breaker, what we have in grants. There's a little bit of everything.
Another question along the line. Um, when we, when we keep kids in district versus these out-of-district tuitions, is there an effect to the circuit breaker?
There is. Um, so if we, uh, bring a child back in and the tuition does not meet the, the threshold to get a circuit breaker reimbursement, which is, uh, roughly 45,000, give or take. Um, we, and circuit breaker right now is about 70% of that, then we would not get the reimbursement for that.
70% of the number of bodies.
Of the, correct.
So we're saving money by running, to the extent we might get less. It's circuit breaker money, but it's because we've expended less money overall.
Right. More, more, it costs more in the short term, 'cause we would, or no, costs more money in the long, no, short term. 'Cause we would be, you know, hiring contract services, maybe an extra teacher, something to keep them in district, but it would save the district in the long.
In fact, uh, the reimbursement rate, remember, you'll remember we had extraordinary relief available to us through state at the end of FY18. And, um, that higher percentage, two things happened. Percentage went up because the state relooked at it, but we also had really high out-of-district numbers. So revenues were up, so that's a portion of what's there with that 716. So to your question, it's a little bit of everything. Um, there are certain situations in district you can claim against circuit breaker. Um, sometimes one-to-one aides can be claimed. So we'll be way down in the, the lower levels of what hits eligibility. But there are some in district services that can be claimed. So not every child will be eligible, but it's gonna be something we continue to keep a close eye on.
And you qualify for extraordinary relief when your expenses for tuitions are 25% more
Yeah, we, we became well aware of extraordinary relief, so.
Yeah.
So here is the projected early retirement incentive savings for the CPS budget. I think it sort of speaks for itself. Um, it was successful, um, and it was an initiative towards sustainability. So the CPS budget has eight locations. Preschool, district-wide kindergarten, district-wide elementary, Alcott, Thoreau, Willard, middle school and district-wide. The following eight slides summarizes the expense categories by location. The preschool budget increased 20.84% due to an increase in special ed, contract services, aid salaries and teacher salaries. The contract service increase is more in line with our actual spending costs. The increase in aides and teacher salaries was because we moved salaries that were budgeted in other locations to this location and not due to an increase in staff. There's also contractual obligations contributing to this increase. So you'll notice when we get to some of the district-wide lines, they're going to be less, uh, in these areas, um, because we moved them to the location where the people are actually working.
So this increase, although it looks like it's a combination of kind of correcting where things are supposed to be, or mostly correcting where there's, things are supposed to be. Because you said the increase in contracted services is also kind of a correction of how we're reporting.
Correct.
But also an increase of contracted services so we can keep kids in more, in district.
Right.
So there is an increase in spending to save
Yeah, I mean, the preschool
and to, and primarily serve these children better.
Right, preschool, the, the needs in the preschool have done nothing but increase over the last
Right.
few years, so the budget frankly has been chasing those needs
Okay.
since my arrival. Um, so I think we're finally to a place where we've got us, a program that's expanded fully enough. We're maintaining most kids because our, our ability to do so has expanded. Uh, but you can see it's become a pretty significant cost. Um, we actually have brought Wested back to do a, a preschool review, um, after the first of the year so that they can help us look at our programs and our offerings and do that same work we've done at the rest of the district level. Um, so I'm looking forward to that. I think at least the good news is all the costs are now captured in the place they're supposed to be and we've seen it stabilize a bit from where it has been the last two years, so.
And just to review or confirm again, tuitions for preschool do not come into our revenues. They go into town revenues, right?
Yes, and right now they go to the town general fund. Um, I've had that conversation with the town manager and it would require a warrant article to, uh, move that over to a revolving account of our own.
Okay.
So you can expect to hear more on that. So right now, those revenues that are meant to be offsetting, the regular education students are paying tuition, meant to be offsetting some of the staff costs, we are not actually receiving that money right now. So we are absorbing all of that in the budget.
So if you remember my prior presentation, kindergarten was a lot bigger. I've now moved it, anything that was not district-wide kindergarten to the schools where the expenses are happening. So the $8,222 decrease in district-wide kindergarten is a result of the zero-based budgeting and identifying exactly what expenditures are needed in the district-wide program. This is a small budget request of 26,000 for FY20, but expenditures that are not directly associated with one particular school. Uh, and this is the reason why we have a district-wide location for kindergarten.
Is that something you'll maintain going forward?
I will, because now I've identified these costs as a district-wide, so I can have a comparison. They move to a school, um, then we move with it and we show you what happened.
Right. And as opposed to having it built into district-wide elementary altogether, kindergarten is separate because of the fact that it's not mandated?
It's just the way our charter accounts are set up.
Right, okay.
And, uh, I mean, I can make any changes you recommend going forward, but to have some sort of comparison to the FY19 budget and how it was budgeted, this is the way that I, I did it, yeah. So here's the district-wide elementary. Um, I mean, right away you can see that the increase is only 1.19%. Um, so it's increasing 1.19%. A few categories that stick up A few categories that stick out are salaries clerical, which is increasing because of a change in where someone was being charged to in the past. So it's not really an increase, again, it's a decrease in another line. There's also a large decrease in the tutor lines because these tutors are now budgeted in the locations where they work. Other positive and negative swings are a result of the zero-based budgeting process in consolidating many of the lines. The school discretionary lines such as PV, equipment, supplies were all increased over the FY nineteen budgeted amounts, but are more in line with our actuals. All three elementary schools are relatively similar in their discretionary expenditure budgets. Overall, the Alcott school budget is increasing three-point-two-seven percent. There is an eight-point-two increase in teachers mainly due to the double step increase. The reduction in tutors is the result of the zero-based budget and budgeting exactly our obligations based on the contracted amounts and not, again, not due to a major reduction. The amount requested for FY twenty is still higher than FY eighteen's actuals. The major increase in supply is due to consolidating district-wide supply lines and budgeting them in the elementary schools where the expense is happening and, as Dr. Hunter said, the everyday math. Overall, the Thoreau school budget is increasing four-point-one-six percent. Contract services are increasing thirteen-point-two-one percent due to new special ed programs designed to keep children in the district. Aides have also increased forty-seven percent, but it's mainly due to the budgeting them, again, in the correct account as you can see by the FY eighteen actuals. Teacher salaries again are a big driver, it's seven-point-six-five percent increase. The tutors have decreased but have been replaced by special ed teachers that have happened earlier this fiscal year. Again, supplies are up for the same reason as Alcott. Overall, the Willard budget is increasing only point-four-one percent. The reason is the teacher's line is seeing a savings based on FY nineteen budgeted and projected FY twenty obligations. There's a lot of retirees coming out of those, that school. Most of the line is savings through attrition. Contract services have increased due to special education programs. Professional development is going up due to Wilson and foundation training. There is a decrease in the aid budget mainly due to budgeting people again in the right account and not a thirty-four percent decrease in aid staff. The middle school is seeing a four-point-five-six percent increase overall. There are a hundred-and-three lines in the middle school budget FY twenty, down from a hundred-and-nineteen in FY nineteen. Every single one of these lines is zero-based. The nurses budget is increasing twenty-point-four-three percent, but is now in more in line with the FY eighteen actuals. The aides line is increasing a hundred-and-five thousand. Teacher salaries are only going up two-point-nine-seven percent from FY nineteen budgeted, but are actually going up fourteen-point-three percent from FY eighteen actuals. Lastly, the tutor budget is decreasing twenty-three percent from FY nineteen's budgeted. And then the last location is the district-wide.
Jared, can you just go back to that slide?
Please.
I think I had a question, let me see if I find it when you were talking. Oh, it was the, wait, I'm trying to line it up, the stipend, can you just talk to the stipend total? It's called the zero?
Yes, the stipend, the reason for that is because the stipends there, there was two of them. Yes, there was, I'm sorry, there was a budget for those two stipends. They were actually being paid out of another account for FY nineteen and we moved them to another account. It was just a, no one was getting those stipends in the middle school in that account.
Thank you.
So district-wide location, our budget is decreasing one-point-three-five percent from FY nineteen budgeted. Again, due to line consolidation, move in stipends, staff, and other expenditures to other locations. There were a hundred-and-fifty-eight budgeted lines in the district-wide location in FY nineteen. We brought them down to a hundred-and-twenty. The contingency budget is up sixty-one thousand. The reason for this is we centralized our contingency. Contract services have increased mainly due to the maintenance contract services by putting expenditures in the correct accounts. Salaries for teachers have gone up due to moving two specialists that were budgeted in a school but have a district-wide role. Tutors were moved to the correct school location and supplies were increased to actual expenditures. So I kind of snipped that, but the total increase, you can't see it here, and I'll move that for the, when I put it on the website. Again, it's a decrease of a one-point-three-five percent.
And the, oh yes, I have a question about that. Trying to read it, the, one of my questions was about the tuitions. The tuition total. That then has a, is that because of, you see it's zero cross and then?
Yes, so.
That accounts for.
The reason I did that is, that is a circuit breaker. And what we usually have done in the past is we take the circuit breaker and we offset it directly to the accounts. If I had done that, then I would have, I would have to pick a location, whether it was, you know, preschool or without any tuitions. It would have been, you know, middle school has tuitions, elementary has tuitions. So instead, it's a district-wide, nine-hundred-and-fifty off the top, and you know, that's what we're expecting for circuit breaker.
And that's a projected eight-hundred and a one-fifty carryover.
Correct, yeah. And we're pretty spot-on. Special education department has a lady doing, that's been doing it for years, and she knows pretty much to the penny what to expect on that date. So we were expecting this amount on eleven-two, so we're as current as November second for this.
And then the only question is, can you speak to the textbooks total?
Yes. It was two-hundred-and-fifty bucks that, as you can see, was never used, so we reduced it.
So textbooks are really carried out in school, school lines?
There were so many.
Inactive lines essentially.
It's kind of a funny line these days, I know, right?
I think we reduced something like seventy-five lines. There were many lines that were small and they had a use, but probably through some turnover and administration or whatever, they were more using the bigger lines. Those are more of an offset. So we got rid of those, the lines that weren't being used.
Oh, okay.
And budgeted them for admission. So that is the CPS side that I have. Can answer more questions in detail, I got the book there.
He's got the book.
Come on, all right.
Ian can answer questions, so.
I think part of my comment before you, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say every year we're coming at two-nine. This is the correction year because the zero base produces that outcome if it does what it's supposed to do. The hope is that you then lower the base so the sustainability to these points becomes an easier target. But I don't know that we're going to sit here and commit to a two-five or two-nine budget year after year simply because depending on the contract, we may be above that or within that at least. So we want to be sure that you hear that there's a cleanup year that turns into some savings if you get what you hope for in this process, and I think we're pretty satisfied that we did. Hopefully then the years to come really are about contractual increases. You know, you can identify the major drivers going forward. Contractual increases, special education, and programmatic changes you choose to make. You can hear there's no new programs in this budget. There's one new staff, which is a sandbourn custodian, and they've been short-staffed for years in those two schools, the middle school. Outside of that, it's essentially level service, but doing more with what we have. When we were, Heather and I, at the strategic planning conference last week, we were asked about the budget increases as a result of the strategic plan. And the answer, I think, is proven in these budgets. We're reallocating how we have resources that already exist, whether they be money, time, et cetera. So there is no grand new program where we need a few hundred thousand dollars imminently on the horizon in the next number of years. It really will be about level service and reallocating what we have. Hopefully through savings as, you know, we're not done. We've got more on the horizon of things that we're going to continue to reorganize and restructure because we think we can do it more cost efficiently. And then hopefully within budget years, we can take those savings and continue to build sped programs and build a cycle of perpetual improvement within the allocations that we already have. So just, the context is important, that we feel really successful here, but down in the two percents would be, would be tough every year, so.
Well, it seems like also the special education work that you started last year and all, and I expect we'll see some of that back.
Absolutely, yes.
As well, it's like a huge endeavor and likewise huge returns for that, which is great. I have a few questions, I'll jump in. First, I just have to say, I mean, this is, this is very different from budgets that we have seen here in past years. And it's clear, it's clean, it's concise. This line-by-line needs are just so clear to me looking about, I can't thank you enough. It really is an amazing process that you've gone through here. And I feel like I have so much insight into this budget and where everything is in line. So thank you for this process. I mean, it has huge value, clearly. And then I, I'm looking through my questions and most of them have to do with the fact that, in fact, the answer to most of them is probably that was cleanup and corrections and that kind of stuff. But there are a bunch that I want to just highlight that I noticed to point out and make sure that I'm right in my assumptions. So one, and I'm going to dive in really detailed on some of these and then be high-level on other ones, but it's just the order that I came across them. So, in fact, the first one here is really detailed. But I just happen to notice, in the middle school, health education teaching, there's a hundred thousand dollar increase. Is this something new from last year or is that a correction, something that was?
So that was, that was a correction, I believe it was S-one-one-six. So we had a teacher that was being budgeted and reported in PE. When we went through the zero-based budget process, going through all of the lines with the principal, they said, no, this person's a health teacher. So we, you'll see a reduction of eighty-four thousand in that line, which is S-one-one-six, and an increase in the health line.
You count.
I know.
That's impressive.
It's so good. You already answered about the preschool, that was one of my questions. Professional development, it increased at all of the elementary schools, is that also, is that related to like new cultural proficiency stuff we're doing or also correction for more things work?
So one of the things that we did was, when I got here, professional development lines were probably the most confusing thing to me. They were all district-wide, but then they had, they had in the schools themselves. And it seemed, you know, two-thirds of the ones in the schools were unused and then they were used out of the district-wide lines. So what we did is we consolidated. We did the best we could with zero-basing them. Gave everyone, if they couldn't a hundred percent build it up, the zero-based way, we gave them and not to exceed them up with what their intentions are. So it's more of consolidating. And one of the other things I will say is, we're not done building this budget. Laurie told me a couple of weeks ago, I was listening.
You're hard to be close.
We're not letting them spend these lines if they're not, if we don't know what's in them. So there's some lines that we had trouble building, PD was one of them. So this is an ongoing, ongoing zero base for next year.
Just one of the things we had to sort out first in PD was because the lines were either district-wide or building-based, but nothing had, it hadn't been clearly defined who had access to what. So the conversations I walked into were, why did Alcott use all of that lineup before I got to it? And the answer was, well, nobody was supposed to use it, Kristen was supposed to use it. So that's really what the zero base has been so far, is like, okay, we're going to, we're going to put Kristen's work here and the elementaries will have their building-based work here. Now they have to work within the amounts that they have to define what they're going to be spending their funds on. So it had a process piece to sort out before we could get all the way to the exact work that they're going to be doing. They know what they're going to be doing, we just haven't itemized it.
That's awesome. Okay, so next one, salaries, I mean, when you go through the detailed version of this, line by line, almost every line that says salary is either up or down or all adjusted. I'm assuming that most of those are due to corrections and moving to the right place and adjusting them. Are there any that are due to something else? Which I think the answer is no, because you've already said we're not hiring new people other than the sandbourn maintenance, but is there?
No, no.
Every line is built up. The only ones, you know, we're in contract negotiations with the CTA, so for next year, you might see some budget transfers. But for the most part, we can, we know how we got to every number.
Awesome.
Some of that number would be salary increases.
Correct, they know, and we, they know ones, yeah. And the way that we did the hourly employees was, we know what their contract really, hours they're working, times the number of days they're getting paid, if they're getting ten extra holidays, if they mostly are. They might work a hundred-and-ninety days, but they might get ten days of holidays. So it's all tied out to the hours, times the days, times the hourly rate. And it should be exact.
Okay, which brings me to my last question, sorry, I'm like counting on you. After all the budget subcommittee, I'm entrenched, it was getting so interesting. Okay, last one. To your point, Laurie, this, this zero-based budgeting has been a big one-time correction. At the same time, we have the bump of the double step. And so I guess I just kind of want to put it out there and get a better understanding of exactly the effect that this zero-based budgeting had. So is it possible to break out that double step somehow? Do we know how much accounts for that double step so that we can say, oh, without that, here's, here's what our increase would be? Here's how effective that zero-based budgeting was?
So the way that we did this budget is we, we really, I really built it off FY eighteen's, that's when I started. So FY eighteen's actuals to FY nineteen's obligations, and then you build the FY twenty. So it was about seven-hundred to seven-hundred-and-forty thousand to roll everybody up the double steps. Now, if they were on the top stack, they're not part of that seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. So I would say, I feel comfortable saying it was about seven-hundred-and-forty thousand was the double, double increase.
It's about the value of that, okay.
So it's about eight percent.
And so I remember the other day in budget subcommittee, am I tying to the right budget? You said that a percent increase in the budget equaled about three-hundred thousand, correct? So seven, forty, let's call it, almost two-and-a-half percent of the increase equates to the double step. Take that out of the two-nine-nine, you've got about a point-four, five percent increase before the double step. That's impressive. Does everybody follow that?
Yeah.
And that's, that's incredible.
Yeah, it's a turn of cost saving. We've had enough savings and reorganizations that we essentially counter for most, much of the double step.
I think we want to be careful how we talk about that because there wouldn't have been one step anyway. So it's one step.
Oh, that's true, that's true, yeah, okay.
It's half of that.
So half of that, okay. So I guess I just wanted to, wanted to see it without such a big step because, I mean, what you've done has, has brought us a lot of value here.
Okay, that's all my questions, I couldn't stop you.
All right. Ready to do it again? You have to call the.
Oh, are you, we're done with the second?
Yeah, we're going to, that is the, I mean, the CPS business, so we have our punctual regional numbers. Hi, Mary, hi Christine.
Hi.
There's a video.
Right, and I'm glad you're here early, because now we would have all the same questions for the regional budget.
Yeah, no, that's right, that's right. So I give I call the. So I give I call the VCRs committee to order. We're still being recorded and thank you all for coming. First agenda item is public comments. None, okay. And certainly we'll recognize the Nani visits in a formal way and I know one of our own was very much involved in this, is I permit?
I'll let Laurie pick up what she's going to say and I'll add to it.
So we thought it worth two pieces. One is just to highlight the success of the recent visit of all of those from the Nai, but the second piece was David was here earlier this spring, I guess, talking on naming a street or naming the driveway or doing something formal since they had named Concord Street, I guess, in the Nai. So it seemed appropriate to bring some closure to that. David wasn't available to come tonight, but he provided us a video that will seem certainly very familiar to Heather who was there, where we dedicated the plaque that we purchased in the main lobby of the building, just next, between the gym and the main office essentially at the high school. And I think David's pretty eloquent in his comments to summarize the history and real meaning behind our sisterhood connection with them. And it was just a great moment, so it was very many awkward that he had it on tape. And so we could play it for you tonight and just really enjoy all that was. And Heather probably has a lot more to share.
I can share some thoughts after.
Yes. So this is literally in the, in the presentation as we're getting started.
There aren't. Let's look at the cable in the back, there's an audio cable coming out.
Yeah, we didn't test it here. I'm taking it on my laptop.
You want to do a voiceover Heather?
Yeah. That's too bad.
I can give a really brief history.
I mean, I can play it on my laptop, it's not going to sync up with David, but can you tolerate that?
Sure, yeah.
Put it next to the microphone?
Yeah, if you put it next to the microphone.
I'll do that.
Yeah, that's good. On three, you hit play together.
And again, that plaque is where Heather, it's the first floor.
So it's right, if you, if you're looking at the lobby of, if you're looking at the main office and turn left towards the gym, it's right there in front of you on that wall.
Second floor.
Second floor, kind of before you walk downstairs, near the window that looks down into the gym.
And how big is?
Oh, it's probably.
Two feet by three feet, something like that.
Prominent.
Two by four.
Yeah.
It's a good size, yeah. All right, you ready? Right, hit the button.
We were tremendously honored when, back in last November, the town of the Nai recognized the relationship that is, in some ways, that is in place since eighteen seventy-eight. We are counted by the naming of Nani Street, of Concord Street in Nani. So we have, it is fortunate enough to be able to create a monument to the relationship between our two schools.
That's me tweeting the picture I just took. Thank you.
So the text here talks about the creation of the relationship, beginning with William Wheeler's visit to Okeide in the eighteen seventies, continuing with Dr. Tom Burton's creation of a modern relationship, and extending into the lives of people, faculty, administrators, and students from both Concord High School and Nani High School, who have helped the So we are very proud of the plaque, but of course, the plaque is just an object, just a symbol. The real honor to the work that all of these people have done and that you are continuing I'd like to thank Principal Mike Strillo and also Superintendent Doctor Laurie Hunter for making this happen. I'd like to thank the generations of teachers and students who grew this relationship. We had several alumni from our program here today, including Andrew Purba and Julie And I want to thank two students, one of whom is not here today, one of whom is, for really being the genesis of this particular project. One is Dee Hunter, who's right behind you. And one is Allison Lee, who's not with us here today. So I will close by reading the words in English to a poem written by a Japanese poet, and translated to English by citizens of Nani. It was performed during the Sideline Books April Visit to Honor the Memory of the Program. And I think it's very appropriate because it honors both the memory but also the future So forgive me, I can't help but go to read it in English. You can read the Japanese one. So we gathered here, my friends, to build the future of this land. War will come, let's hold hands, of real soil, instead of fighting for honor. Let us sing together this ode to joy as we walk on this land before us, the flowers bloom. All right, we sing in English, go learning after this.
So yeah, I can add a little to it. It was definitely a nice explanation by David, this relationship is gone. It has deep roots and the more recent version of it is now in its twenty-first year, the sister city relationship. I can say there were really neat connections even from the school's point of view at all levels, especially the high school, obviously. There were eight students here from Nani, they ranged from eighth grade actually up through eleventh grade. They all had home stays with students here from the high school. By the end of it, I could tell and had heard from the principal, they all had an amazing time, our students were extremely welcoming. They also spent a day in the, one of the days that they were in the high school, they spent all three lunch periods with kind of a table set up and doing Japanese Culture Day, where students, where CCHS students could come up and learn about, let's see, they did, they did, they were serving miso soup, they did some origami, they were doing chopsticks lessons, a bunch of stuff like that. And the students said that they were, you know, kind of swamped the whole time. So our students were really curious, were up there learning from the Japanese students and everything. I mean, I think that kind of thing is a really neat personal touch and a way to really exchange just information and ideas and make touchpoints. At the elementary school, the adults in the delegation, there were about, I think, seven adults who came from Nani also, they all went to the Alcott School, where the entire school had a whole school assembly and led by the music teacher sang songs to the delegation. It was, it was really neat, each grade sang a different song for them.
They sang for the kids.
The Japanese group sang for the kids. They exchanged gifts, the Alcott students had gifts that they had prepared for the visitors. And, you know, at the end, and I was there for this as well, at the end of it, some of the younger students, it had to be kindergartners, first graders, up in the front who were kneeling, came up to me and were just so curious and interested in asking, well, did you fly here from Japan too? And how did they get here? And how long? And what are they doing here? And there was just so much curiosity there. It was really neat to see it come alive just by putting people together. And there's that, there's that innate curiosity about the world. So it was really fun to see. I know that in the, in past days of this relationship, there have been more ties with the schools, where elementary schools kind of created sister school relationships with schools over there. You know, and it's the thing, the kind of thing that I would love to see us support, obviously not to put on to teachers because they have a lot going on, but when teachers and educators are interested in leveraging this type of relationship, it's really, it's really neat to see and it creates a lot of opportunities for our students and for those who are visiting here. So it, the whole week was really an amazing experience. And I will say also the last thing, from the principal of the Nani High School, he told me many times that this was actually one of the most amazing experiences of his life and that he would be able to bring back all of this to his students, to all of Nani High School, and share the warmth of this relationship and this exchange and really support it and continue it going forward. So he sends his thanks and the whole group just, it was a wonderful week of exchange of cultures. It was neat.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So the Concord Band travels to Japan, right?
Yes, exactly. The CCHS band.
High school band.
High school band.
Okay.
Has gone.
I'm sorry.
Every summer, years ago, in the spring. Yeah. So in April, there will be a trip of, I'm not sure how many kids in this year, but it's a large group going over there.
It's a big trip.
Yes, exactly.
Well, your point's in supporting. Adoring fundraiser.
We will, okay.
It's there. You know, two last comments, I think, one is we had to thank Heather who jumped in to translate at that Alcott Assembly without knowing she was going to be asked to do that.
Well, I did know, I thought it was for three or four people, then I walked in and it was the entire family.
It probably is a moment for me, all this cultural competency work, and we've been talking a lot about identity and making sure kids have someone to identify with, and at the end of the assembly, two, two of the youngest kids in the crowd went right up to these folks and started to speak in Japanese and that was clearly their heritage and background. And I thought, there's, there's my moment, that we just helped those kids feel connected here. And vice versa, when the Alcott kids who learned a little bit of Japanese or learned a song that they recognized, you'd see the same response in the visitors when they would recognize the language or the song and so the identity worked both ways.
Yeah, that's great. It was great stuff, really neat. Thanks for all your support with this, in the schools.
Great. Reading of the minutes is next. Can I have a motion to approve the October ninth and twenty-third minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I read them, I didn't find one little mistake. Excellent. All those in favor?
All right. Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin. Next is liaison reports and chairs report, any liaison reports?
Well, I'd report that adult ed had their program last Wednesday night, they had about a hundred and ten people come.
Wow.
And it was a really great program. There wasn't enough time to do a full discussion, which is really the meat of the program. So they're actually going to do a follow-up tomorrow night for anybody who wants to come and sort of talk it through some more, but it was really great. You just, we knew from the beginning that it was going to be something that people will wish they went to, but it's good for the Little Speakers Bureau we started and it was a really good night.
It was alvatory, I was there, fabulous show, great discussion.
It was cultural competency for the rest of us.
Yeah. It was all about cultural proficiency and having discussions. It was really interesting, especially given our discussions here this year. Great stuff.
Any other liaison reports?
The fact met this morning and Melance and Heath was there going through the CNLP audit and some discussion about scheduling for ours, but the thing that came up that I think is worth thinking about here and will likely come up, there was a change in the, in the law around OPEB, trusteeship. And Ian, if I'm off the mark here, let me know. The town's OPEB set up earlier than ours, so there'll be a warrant article that will address that and bring that into line with current mass law. I think ours is okay, but the Gername thing relative to ours that came up, between the region and town, there'll be about twenty-two million dollars in the OPEB funds. And we don't really have particularly sophisticated approach to investment policy currently. So the idea that got talked around, I think it's been talked around at the select board as well, is to put the investment, to create an investment committee per se, using the one that's already in place with the trustees of the town donations, which is about an eight million dollars, a total of eight million dollars in investment funds. And that group is made up of people who have experience in the investment space and rather than reinventing the wheel, the thought is, you know, it's, would probably be hard to get another five people together to have another investment committee. So I think that the direction is to bring both of the, the request will be to bring ours under as well, the trustees of town donations to operate as an investment committee and to create investment policy for the regional OPEB trust as well as the town's OPEB trust. So stay tuned.
And that committee, you mentioned the abbreviation, that stands for what, financial audit?
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee, okay.
I can report that the budget subcommittee met and you've, well, at least those here for the CPS part of the meeting have heard half of what went on there. We didn't get to the final numbers, but Jared gave us a very in-depth rundown of everything that was going into these budgets. We asked lots of questions and even then we couldn't stump him, but it was. But it was a great discussion about everything going into these budgets, so very good insight there.
Any others? So I went to the last EDCO School Committee Member Roundtable meeting, which was very interesting because about half the meeting was discussing something that we'll discuss later on this evening, virtual school days. And so we'll, we'll have some, some issues to, and ideas to discuss, and I found it very interesting. Superintendent reports next.
Great, thank you. So I'll highlight some of the pieces I've put into the report. In terms of response intervention in special education, our two new programs opened at the Row and the middle school are opening as actively as we speak. So we're preparing to better service the needs of a number of individual students who need more support than we were able to provide in the past. And we expect that we will have a higher rate of retaining students in district, given that, those are two new programs. We've had a really exciting time, really diving into RTI at the high school, where we have screened all of the freshman class in reading, math, and then social emotional. We've immediately gone into, now that we have data and have identified kids with specifically reading deficits, we would like to intervene and act on those. And so we are now in the throes of building that plan while it's in flight, because we haven't had that targeted assistance available to kids, because we haven't been screening them to identify them. So I think there's a lot of positives to come there, and hopefully we can help those kids succeed quickly and sooner. The original plan is just to screen the kids and get the process underway this year and not necessarily provide intervention, but the educators and us, especially Mr. Mistrillo, can't know who kids are that need support and not find a way to address it, especially when we think about the impact of having a reading deficit in a high school environment, specifically even our high school environment. We know we want to find a way to intervene. So I think what's exciting is our intervention program out of Leslie College that's well established at the elementary and building at the middle is now going to expand up into the high schools. So our LLI program will be very expansive and comprehensive and cohesive, which I think also is a good thing. Educator evaluation, I've been working with the administrative team to look at the phases of the process. Kristin reviewed those last week with us. We're into the longest phase now that the goals are established, to look at observations and collection of evidence. The CTA and, so some members of the CTA, some members of the leadership team will be getting together at the end of the month in a joint labor process. The regulations actually require venue maintain, some discussion about the process, and have a joint labor committee that stays intact. You remember, part of my goals was to put that back in place, so we're looking to meet later this month and monthly, probably up through February. I've met with Mr. Mistrillo and the CCA, where we will have similar conversations, but given the smaller context, we can do it within our regular meetings. We'll be looking at logistics in terms of deadlines and process and quantity of evidence, really factual-based things that are definitely part of what's bargained in the contracts. And ultimately, depending if we move things around, I think there's some mutually agreeable ways to make deadlines work better for both the administrators and the teachers. There may be an MIA to come from it, or it'll loop right into the CTA bargaining. Student wellness, we did implement the pair screening tool at the high school, so we have that data. The teams are reviewing that as to social emotional needs our kids may have. The other big piece of data that was released was the 2018 Youth Risk Behater Survey data, so that is on the webpage, and it's pretty interesting to look at what's happening, both because it also offers comparatives to some of the other local districts to us, because it's all coming out of Emerson and our joint work through the hospital. Two major things remain or now add to. The stress factor is continuing to be something that we see in the data. It's something we need to continue to discuss, but we're thrilled that the strategic plan focuses on that. The other number that every high school is challenged with, the vaping number is notably higher than the past, and we're all working on plans, both education and prevention, and all of those pieces that are even more challenging with the vaping, vaping apparatus and the way that that plays out versus some of the previous substance issues we've all had to manage in schools, so. School safety, the safety committee met last week. It's a combined group of fire, police, administrators, school committee, a parent or two representative, the teaching staff. We've set a number of priorities for this year, whether they be basic, low-level things, like we're all going to update our badges and wear our badges in the schools, to some other facility-based items like lights and security cameras, to updating the actual emergency response plan, which it's been a little while, so we actually started to look at that at the administrative meeting this morning. We've got a template out of the STARS program, which is at a state level in collaboration with the DA's office and state police. So Scott, Officer Camilleri, is directing us right to that plan, so we don't start from scratch. Probably the other most intriguing and potentially exciting piece of work we're doing is looking at, with the police, looking at some communication tools that are app-based, more flexible in terms of they'll be available on, for staff, they'll be available on laptops, iPads, phones, highly portable.
Communicate when there's an event.
Communicate when there's an event, that is right. So there's some two-way communication opportunities in there. So one of our ongoing discussions have been, if you're in a portion of a building and know something that the police would be, you know, would benefit from knowing, how would you ever get that to them? Well, this would give us some ability for interaction between the police and the teachers. It also gives us other information at our fingertips, depending on a tool that we use. This one we looked at last week actually hangs up with Aspen. So right on our phones, we'd all be pulling up class lists and student data, and really intriguing to think of what the power of that is. I think especially for, for me, is one of the primary output of information to see a lot of opportunity in a really consolidated way, you know, it gets down to, they had pre-programmed one-line messages that you'd send out, you know, this isn't the choice I want to use, but it's the one I remember, Active Shooter at CCHS. I literally have 80 buttons to push, and push it goes. So lots of different opportunities there. We're taking our time, because they all offer a little bit of different piece to them. Pricing seems comparative. We're highly looking at ones that make sure, also one highly on the wireless, given our cellphone issues. So lots for us to consider, but we're doing it in conjunction with the police and the town's IT, Mark Howes here from Concord's IT department, and we can loop to Carlisle and keep talking on all these different things we're exploring, so.
Well, we said that, there's one question I was going to ask. You said some of them could be based on Wi-Fi, so that they're not dependent on the cellular?
Most of them so far, and we eliminated one that didn't, runs on the Wi-Fi until you don't have Wi-Fi signal, and then it's going to trip over to the cellphone, which still, we have a little bit of discussion to have there, but at least you're in range of the Wi-Fi, you have that available.
It was encouraging to see how much in-house homework had been done before that meeting.
Yes, thank you. Yes. There's a lot of people spending time on this discussion, and so this committee lets us all share out. And then we left with more work to do, and we'll come back together later in the year and share on where we are. But it's important to have all those perspectives in the same room some of the time, too. Thank you. Instructional engagement innovation integration, the temporary STEAM lab in Conference Year One is up and running. We have some of the younger kids coming over now. Everyone will loop through grades K through 5 this year. The STEAM lab itself, we're now in the HVAC system and looking at another six weeks most likely for that process. It's all taking longer than we had hoped, but the work itself with the kids is up and running, and the tools that we purchased, we are so gifted from the CEF are available to us. The furniture's in for when the room is ready. So once it happens, it's going to happen quick, and it's going to be really exciting. I did meet with my superintendent student advisory council. I have a few high school students who meet with me, and probably one of the best parts of that is hearing the trickle-down of the work we're doing at our level that plays its way all the way out through to the teachers and then to the kids. So when you hear there's things like teacher surveys being done, you know that's stemming back to some of the engagement work that the high school took on last year, and it's all starting to bubble, and the kids are noticing, which was really fun to hear, so. Cultural proficiency, we've identified two keynotes for the later part of the school year, January and May. We have all of staff going to have access to these folks in January over the course of two different days. They're really meant here to inspire us and keep our vision alive while we do the lower level work of building, building different processes. I sent a letter to the staff late last week about our approach to the month of December and what really being inclusive and culturally proficient looks like and means, after we worked with the ideas staff from EDCO. So we're continuing to move along. I think you're going to hear a lot of exciting things. Our new meco-director, a lot of ideas going forward into the second part of the school year, including a motto or a slogan really, and some really other really exciting things he's going to offer us, so. A lot of good movement there. And finally, community and collaboration, your exciting news, your school committee's subscriber list is up to over 200 subscriptions. I think you were close to 300 late last week, so you're building a following.
That's why we're here, is that a following.
I have been out a couple of the union events, the high school choral concert. You people keep conflicting with some of the band concerts and some other things I'd like to get to in the finance committee, so hopefully as we get through budget season, I can get out to more of those. We attended the conference last week, as Heather and I mentioned, strategic planning piece we were able to share out with Glory Lycaus. I did go to a sustainability meeting under the leadership of Kate Hanley, the Concord Sustainability Director, this morning, and really was able to connect with a number of in-town groups who, that's their absolute concern and mission, that we continue to make progress. I think that's a great forum to build our connection and our interest in those efforts. We had a lot of discussion that I think people appreciate and understand that a lot, the easier stuff is like the facilities and the infrastructure, and the harder work across all of the different members of us who were there from a wide range of different sites, is behavioral changes and how much harder that can be. So it was a good start to the conversation. I expect some one-off follow-up and K-OP was connecting over time. And I continue to meet with Jim O'Shea and talk on different pieces of what Carlisle's doing, and that's always positive and productive. Our discussion lately's been a little bit of calendar, so at least we know what each other's doing. So we'll continue to stay connected over there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence is next, and I'm aware that one parent sent us an email of quite a detail and some very good ideas, again concerning one of the subjects we're going to discuss later on, virtual school days. So I think that was it on correspondence, right?
Yes.
Okay, Jared, one more time.
All right.
What a good time.
Yes.
Just, I'm going to fill in the time, because I'd like to give you context as we open this up. You know, the high school budget brings a lot of things that are very straightforward and a number of things that aren't as straightforward, and you have decisions to make. So what Jared's going to bring you, in addition to the really great work of Jared and his team, and Mike Mistrillo and his department chairs, and all of the folks involved, those are kind of the simpler things. The harder pieces are going to be some of the variables that impact the regional budget, which we don't have to deal with on the CPS side, which are OPEB, insurance is a fixed cost, but it has impact. The one-to-one laptop program, when we get to that, we can talk on, this is a program that's been in place, but not with a long-term financial plan to it, so we're trying to get that intact. So you're going to have decisions and choices to make there, as well as E and D, which obviously is a pretty important discussion as well. So Jared's going to end up giving you multiple scenarios to talk on, and the numbers associated with those, so. But that said, all the work we've done, we know we've got a really tight budget, aside from those pieces you're going to talk on, the operating line themselves, really clean and easily supported, so. All yours.
All right. I love the regional aspect. I love, so this is, this is a fun budget to talk about and do, so I just had to say that. That's right.
This is where I'm like, why can't it be as simple as, say, the Concord budget? He's loving it, so balance each other out.
So again, some of these lines are going to be redundant, but the budgets are very different. The way that we did the CPS budget is by location. The way that we do this budget is by program, because there's only one location. So again, some of these slides might be redundant, some of what I'm saying is a little bit redundant, but I think it's worth saying twice. So again, what zero-based budgeting is for the people that just came in, zero-based budgeting is a method of budgeting in which all expenses must be justified. Zero-based budgeting starts from a zero base, and every function is analyzed for its needs and costs. In the past four months, principals, administrators, department heads, and support staff reviewed all 310 budget lines in the FY '19 budget and built FY '20s from scratch. It was a collaborative effort, and only worked because everybody bought into it. We were able, we were able to consolidate many lines. An FY '20s budget was reduced by 47 to 263 lines. That is really still way too much for a high school budget. So we look forward to reducing that next year as well and consolidating. Some of the highlights of what we reviewed is three to five years' worth of legal expenses, salaries, including FTEs, steps and lanes, longevity, stipends, overtime, and substitutes, contract services, memberships and fees, PD, and all aspects of special education. We then reviewed all supplies and materials, textbooks, equipment, software and hardware. We continued to take a deeper dive into our contracts for copiers and cellphones, and again, we've already identified redundancies in both budgets. We looked into interest, revenue, and rental income, and we recently hired a transportation consultant to see if we can do things more efficiently and to help us with the sustainable 10-year bus replacement cycle. So the superintendent's high school recommended budget for FY '20 is $34,909,657, which is 3.44% higher than FY '19 school committee-approved budget. This chart breaks down the recommended budget by decima thousand function. As you can see, I wrote down FY '20's recommended, recommended budget and compared it to FY ' '18 school committee budget, FY '18 transfer budget, FY '18 actuals, and the delta between the two, FY '19 school committees' approved budget, and the difference between FY '19 and FY '20 requested. There are some large drivers, such as instructional leadership and fixed charges, and some large reductions, including district leadership and admin, debt service, and program with other districts. So like the CPS budget, instead of breaking down the budget traverse by deci-function, it broke them down by expense category. There's some more categories in the regional budget. These categories included banking, charter assessment, contingency, contract services, debt, early retirement, equipment, insurance, legal, teacher longevity, teacher stipends, maintenance, memberships, OPEB, overtime, professional development, admin manager salaries, teacher salary, tutor salary, clerical salary, maintenance, custodial salaries, et cetera. Again, all salaries had their own category. Other expenses included supply materials, textbook curriculum, substitutes, workers' compensation, social security, unemployment, utilities, et cetera. In all, I created 50 different categories for the CC budget, 18 more than the CPS budget. And for the high school, these were the biggest drivers. Contract service category is increasing 10.82% due to the same reasons that they are at the CPS level. Like CPS, and a common theme throughout this presentation, we did an audit of every account and things in the past that may have been in contract service, may have been paid out of the non-contract service line account. Special education contract services are going up $34,000 due to current FY '20 needs, and also the expense type we are now charging them to. Maintenance contract services are going up $22,000. And lastly, case specialty and transportation costs are going up $83,000 on the regional side. Employee separation costs are going up 230%. Again, this is misleading. Employee separation costs are going up 230%. Again, this is misleading. We expect to fill all the employees who are taking the incentive at a savings of approximately $30,000. We budgeted all teacher vacancies at $75,000 and we expect the average hire to be around this range. The savings are budgeted in a different expense category such as the teachers' salary accounts. This is the first year we budgeted these expenses and now know the early retirement incentive amount, which is $80,000 for the high school side. Also due to contract obligations, sick leave buyback is increasing $16,000 over FY '19's budget. Insurance is increasing $220,000 over FY '19's budget. Health insurance is going up between 10 and 11%, as well as retiree insurance. Between these two lines, health insurance is going up $185,000. There are other costs in this expense category contributing to the increase such as retirement, athletic insurance and public liability insurance. We are funding OPEB back to the ARC. This is almost a 31% increase from FY '19's budget amount. The $185,000 in OPEB accounts for 13.6 of our total overall asking increase. Athletic coaches' salaries are increasing due to a few reasons. We are decreasing the amount that the athletics revolving accounts contributing to coaches because we are now contributing more of that to field maintenance. And we are also introducing two more sports, girls' freshman basketball and gymnastics. The increase in support staff salaries is contractual and we appropriately funded the accounts and put staff where they should be through the zero-based budget process. There are no increases in support staff FTEs in FY '19 or in this FY '20 budget. Teacher salaries account for $13,371,299 of the $34.9 million requested budget and is 46.1% of the FY '20 recommended increase. The amount requested is contractual. The amount budgeted for teachers in FY '20 is $44,978 more than FY '18 actuals. Software hardware is increasing $118,000. We welcome further discussion once this presentation is complete. We did a 10-year cost analysis of what it would cost to lease these laptops versus buying them. The costs are more expensive in years one and two to buy them, but by FY '22, there's some considerable cost savings to doing it this way and for the duration. So overall, we identified $1.5 million in budget drivers. We also found some cost savings. To offset the budget, we identified $522,000 in cost savings. Debt is going down $202,000. There is also a reduction in transportation salaries because the full contingency increase for the 2017 school year due to the time change was not all needed. Transportation driver salaries are budgeted $57,000 more than FY '18 actuals. So again, the contingency that we put in there, all of it wasn't needed. There's no reductions in staff. FY '20's budget is still higher than FY '18 actuals. The tutors line is reduced 5.94% from FY '19's budget due to encumbering the contracted amounts for each tutor in the system and again, making sure everybody's in the right lines. Lastly, like CPS, we are seeing a reduction in special tuition from FY '19's budget, again due to the zero-based budget approach. In FY '20's budget, we fully funded the OPEB ARC. This is an increase of $185,368 from FY '19's funded amount. This chart shows the estimated required ARC until 2038. At the beginning of last month, Moody's Investor Service upheld the district's AAA rating, but the report stated that we are AAA with a negative outlook, which reflects our weakened reserve levels and elevated fixed costs following the completion of the new high school. Should our reserve levels weaken further or our fixed costs substantially increase, it would put additional downward pressure on the rating. Moody's said that we have one of the highest, if not the highest, OPEB balances of any school district in the state. But since our reserves are low and we continue to use E and D as a revenue source, having a low fund balance has a more negative impact on our bond rating than having a high OPEB balance. Simply put, the weighted measure in their determination of bond rating, fund balance is more important than OPEB fund balance. They stated that increasing our E and D balance or other reserve balances should be the focus and we are on their watch list for the next 18 to 24 months. Again, I think this slide also speaks for itself. Here are the projected early retirement incentive savings. And again, I think it was clearly a success. And here are our health insurance costs for active employees as well as retirees. Again, we expect between a 10 and 11% increase and between the active and the retiree increases projected is $185,000. Debt service is steadily going down and this slide illustrates our debt service projection up until FY '38. A little hard to read there, but the good thing is it's going down right now. So the fun part. Unlike the Concord school budget, the regional side is responsible for projecting revenue. The following list of items is the revenue we received before we figure out the total assessments for the two towns. At this time, we are projecting a $33,732 increase in Chapter 70, a $67,369 increase in Chapter 71 transportation. We are recommending we decrease our E and D contribution by $339,460 to $350,000. We are projecting an $85,000 increase from FY '19's budget amount of interest. And we are showing that we receive about $80,000 in miscellaneous revenue. And we're also projecting a slight $326 decrease in charter reimbursement. So the total general fund revenue from local and state aid is $3634,494. The initial governor's budget does not come out until the Fourth of January, so these numbers are very preliminary.
Jared, what's in miscellaneous revenue? Like rent?
What's that? We get like donations.
The biggest piece is actually the one-to-one least maintenance.
Oh, oh.
So that's gonna be going away. But we wanted to show that this is a miscellaneous revenue and it's offsetting, it's really offsetting assessments. So this is how I like to show how I do the revenue portion. And I did three different scenarios. This is the scenario that includes what we presented in the line item bucket. So based on the regional agreement, assessments are dictated by the October 1st enrollment. According to the October 1st enrollment, Concord had 75.25% of the enrollment share and Carlisle had 24.75, and you can see that right at the top. The operating budget does not include debt or transportation. Therefore, we break out the revenue into three sections. The operating budget, you can see up there if you can read it, is $29,702,673. We then reduce that amount by state and local revenue. Therefore, the amount to assess above Chapter 70 and local revenue is $26,569,207. Underneath that box, transportation is broken out and the amount to assess above the Chapter 71 reimbursement is $226,636. And lastly, is the debt and we broke that out. So the first scenario illustrates what assessments would look like if we fully funded OPEB at the ARC and we reduced E and D from $689,000 in FY '19 to $350,000.
And you buy the laptops.
And you buy the, and you fully fund it.
The line items match that as the most aggressive, basically solved.
Yeah. So in this scenario, assessments without debt would be increased a total of 5.61%. In total, 5.31% for Concord and 6.51% for Carlisle. Assessments with debt would be 4.08 and 3.79 in Concord and 4.97 in Carlisle. So that's scenario number one, most aggressive, reducing E and D, fully funding the ARC and having the laptops, buying all the laptops.
And this is what's in the line items, just so you're staying on track with us.
And how close does that get to us to the E and D where you want it? Does that get it?
We're getting there faster than if we funded even half of that. My goal is to get there three to four years with.
And I looked at him and said, no, two. This is the stuff you need to talk about.
Would Moody's say one?
No, Moody's, so we're on Moody's watch list for the next 18 to 24 months. The reason for that is because they're seeing right now that the debt is still high. They're not taking into account really for this year that it's going down 201. They're looking at what our fund balances are. Other than E and D, we don't have any, we don't have any other stabilization accounts. They say that we're using E and D as a revenue source. So we're at two and a half. If we can get up to, you know, even three and a half in the next two years and keep our debt down and have, you know, transparency in the general fund budget and everything, we'll be just fine. So.
Just to add to that, we wanna be three and a half percent and we don't wanna be using any of E and D towards revenues. We need to get to zero as revenue contribution, so this gets us kind of halfway to where we wanna be in terms of contribution.
But to your question, the next two scenarios here, the other please, the numbers can get played out.
So this is scenario number two. So this scenario illustrates what assessments would be if we level funded E and D. So E and D is at the $689,460 and we reduce the OPEB back to the $600,000, which was FY '19's contribution. You'll also notice because we reduced the OPEB amount, the budget went down to $34,724,289,000.
So this is essentially level funding where you kept the OPEB where it was. E and D, you maintained a revenue source of $689,000. This is not what we're recommending. We're just trying to let you see how the numbers swing, especially when it changes the slide. So you can make those decisions.
And this sort of illustrates really what the zero-based approach looked like. And I think you'll see that it's evident that the zero-based approach worked for this budget.
This also includes the funding plan for the laptops.
It does, so that's an added cost that becomes technically the thing. So in this scenario, assessments without debt would be a total of 3.54. 3.25 for Concord, 4.42 for Carlisle. Assessments with debt would be 2.33%, 2.04 in Concord and 3.2 in Carlisle.
So hopefully you can see that without the swings in E and D and OPEB, our percentages are pretty.
This basically shows the effect of the zero-based budget.
Yes.
That's, once again, incredible.
So the next one, I actually just picked, I wanted to see what would it take if we just bent both halfway. So we funded E and D, 525, and we reduced the OPEB contribution in half from the ARC in what FY '19's contribution was. So again, you'll see that the budget reduced by about $92,000, $92,500 because we cut OPEB in half.
So OPEB is at what level with this scenario?
It's about $692,000. So again, E and D here is $525,000. And you probably already know this, but all the other revenue, everything is all stayed the same throughout these scenarios. So what this would do, as you can see, the assessment comparison without debt is a total of 4.55% increase, but Concord's at 4.26, which is right below the guideline. Carlisle's 5.45%, and then without debt, the total increase is 3.19. Concord would be at 2.9 and Carlisle at 4.07. So what we can do if asked is we can do any type of scenario that you wanna know about. If you wanted to see how much, because we're gonna pass this out, if you wanna have this conversation regarding the laptops, you know, how much would it cost to lease for two years and then buy for the next, so put, you know, lease from year one. What it would do in the assessments.
Also, you said you did a, sorry, you said you did a 10-year projection of the costs and cost savings of buying versus leasing.
E and D, I wanna give him full credit.
Yeah, thank you. Is that something new, happy or tonight, if you can see it?
But in those three scenarios, all three of those are buying them, yes.
All three are buying them.
So you've got a.
So that's, that's effective not in these.
You could lower the overall budget if you decided to lease them because the short term is of lower costs.
And the Moody's rating is prioritizing E and D, not so much OPEB over OPEB.
In our situation, yes, but yes, it's all about fund balances for us.
Fund balance or fund balance and using it?
Having a high fund balance reserves with a level of debt that will happen.
So when Moody's says we have one of the highest OPEB balances in the state, relative to something else?
Relative to, correct me if I'm wrong, other school districts. I believe the quote was, we might even have the highest fund balance of any.
In terms, in dollars?
Yes, yeah. So how much that we've accumulated over the past five.
So we did some homework on this last year and the only regional district, they're the only ones we're gonna have that data because municipal districts, the towns are carrying it. Act and Boxborough's been pretty aggressive, but a number of other regional districts had almost nothing. So I think to their point, we have really been proactive in building the balance up.
The trade-off is with E and D, right?
We've been doing a little Robin Peter to pay Paul, I think is what you're speaking.
So my takeaway now is there are really three factors, well, two main factors in these, but potentially three that we need to debate and discuss here. This is somewhat coming from, but it's something we need to meet in the other day. But there's the E and D, the OPEB, and there's the laptops buying versus leasing. Those are the three levers that we have right now to play with, right?
Can I just ask the question that, so the athletic salaries kind of led up for me. So part of the increase is removing, taking money out of the, putting more money, you say it.
Yeah.
Pointing to maintenance.
$75,000, give or take, is being used out of the athletic revolving, athletic revolving comfort field maintenance. And then.
Which is, where it probably should have been, or is that?
So when we increased, I'm gonna have to grab this one, because when we increased the athletic fee a year ago, we've actually not absorbed more coach's salaries per se into the budget. What we did was, it's a little bit of a three-way spin happening here because we wanted the increase in the fee to offset the cost on contracted services to the grounds maintenance. So essentially, we can actually show you one for one that the increase to the fee is now taking care of all the maintenance on those really pretty service needy fields to maintain the caliber we have. One of those, there's a small differential that we had to leave in the coaching salary in the operational budget plus the two new sports to have that show that way.
And, and I do not, do we call that a new program? Those are two new programs.
Well, I think that's pretty well to discuss. It's the only new thing in the entire budget is that we want two new sports. We debated it, I pushed back pretty hard on the administrative team because you look at the total cost of what we spent on athletics and it adds up to, well, it's a little over a million dollars. And, um, you know, the people around, on me thought it was an important, really important piece that we keep adding programs, especially for girls, especially options for maybe not our highest competitive kids. Not that the gymnastics wouldn't be, but our freshman girls is a great entry opportunity for kids. So we didn't stay on it long before this administrative team felt strongly needed to come to you for consideration, so. So yes, Mary, could it be a new program?
Yeah, but I was trying to figure out how much of that, it was like a hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah, no, it's not all of that at all.
It's not, okay.
Probably half.
For two new programs? I haven't broken it down, but I think it's kind of twenty-five thousand.
Yes, minimum.
Each.
No.
Between the two.
Yeah.
Okay, that, I was, I was going in, that, that could be a lever, but, but it's not, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that was a lever, okay.
No, it's not down to eleven, the, the rest of the difference is the movement of the money between the revolving account.
It's E and D, OPEB and one-to-one.
Yes.
Or not necessarily one-to-one, it's, right, how we fund it.
Yes, yes, yes.
We, we weren't sitting here debating whether to continue one-to-one.
And is there, in a ten-year projection of the one-to-one leasing versus buying, how significant is that? Do you have those in different?
Yeah, we have it.
Dive into that now.
You knew your, your stage cue there.
Some more numbers flying around.
Never got so excited about financial spreadsheets.
So the first page of this kinda summarizes a couple of different options that we have. We're kind of at a crossroads right now where we can decide to begin purchasing outright on the one-to-one, um, computers. We can continue leasing the computers or we can wait a couple of years, the deferred purchase option, and then start buying. So this, this first page summarizes the financial impacts based on the budget year that you'll see in the budget and fiscal year column. Obviously, if we go to purchasing, we're gonna be seeing, uh, the biggest budget impact in fiscal year twenty. So the, the budget, um, just for the one-to-one program for the students is gonna be four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars if we continue purchasing. While if we change that, if we switch that to a lease, it would only be two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then you can see where the numbers start to diverge as you go down and you go out the years. So in FY twenty-two, you'll see if we continue purchasing, the total cost of the program is actually going to be lower than the lease and deferred purchase options. And the further out you go, the savings for purchasing compared to lease continue to grow. And if you look at the second chart down below, you'll see the interest costs related to the, related to keeping the lease program going um, in the middle column, and then the deferred purchase option is in the, uh, first column. So those break down the costs. Um, there's a couple assumptions built into this. One is that interest rates keep going and keep rising to about four percent. The next is that we will need roughly three hundred and seventy-five computers every year.
That's a hot. I'm assuming that's what we do today. Is, would you not assume that more and more students will bring their own?
We still, correct me if I'm wrong, we already have the obligation to provide a laptop, um, if, if the students need it. And, yeah, that's been kind of the going.
You know, we've been really talking a lot about maintenance and support to this program and the more kids are on the machines that we own, the simpler everything else is. And I do believe there's cost savings over time, that we're not looking at labor for, for, for kids who are trying to get on and support that we need to provide to them, or when we push things out from a, a master, master plan, um, at the IT office, it goes to all of the laptops all at once, everyone's on the same system, on the same platform. Um, it really is very cost-effective in that regard. Um, the other side of us owning them is for security and protocol and benefits we've had at the middle school for a while. Um, we gain a lot more control over what kids have access to and how we monitor kids and what we can do with that should the needs arise, nobody's sitting there hovering over that, but we have a lot more ability to.
I'm sorry, you lost me a little bit because when we want more students to bring their own, you're saying because of the maintenance and support, we almost wanna discourage that?
Yes. Well, so last spring, we came to you and talked on the state of the union of this program. So you've had a eclectic, uh, set of options for kids. One is to bring their own with very limited kids taking us up on that, frankly, I don't have the data with me, um, very few.
Okay.
The lease program started higher and then waned off, so probably a third dropped at least.
Okay.
Um, major complications with the leasing program and the fee collection and a vendor that said they were gonna help us collect and then all they did was provide us a, a platform for collection that was completely not useful to us and a lot of issues there. So the third option was kids borrowing our machines so that they had something available. So I think coming off the success we've had at the middle school where we provided, um, and, and funded, no question, and sustain that funding and it's just a line item that hasn't had to be touched in a number of years and we can see the benefits of maintaining, providing, collecting, cleaning, overseeing, all of the components that come with owning the machinery. Um, we get to the time when, you know, testing season arises, we can push out to secure environments for the kids. We can't do that if they own their own laptops easily. It just really does become a cost simpler, simplifier, I think, um, both in terms of personnel, labor, time, all of those components. Um, I think what we didn't project here yet that we definitely could see, there may be a year you could take off because the machines last long enough that we might not, in a particular year, be able to collect them, um, from an outgoing class and repurpose them another year before we have to take on another, another project. So we didn't build that in because we're not quite sure where that moment in time would be, but I would think three to four years in, you'd probably have a fleet that's strong enough, you could take a year off and, um.
Or not all, it's like, buy fewer.
No. Buy fewer, buy, yeah.
Okay.
And three seventy-five is probably a little high, incoming classes are closer to three hundred. So we, um, probably err on the side of cautious for the numbers that represented the biggest purchases we would be.
And included the staff.
And include some replacements for the staff because any one-to-one program is only as good as your staff access, so I think you must keep that.
Thank you. I totally misread that.
No, that's, really good question.
Misunderstood that.
Really good question.
And just to clarify the way it's built here, on the top one, under purchase, it's only that column. This is if we start purchasing this year and we continue purchasing, these are our costs every year.
Yes.
And that's the total by the end of FY thirty-one.
And, and the reason why FY twenty, FY twenty-one are gonna be higher is because we do have two existing leases right now.
Right.
So if we start purchasing now, there's gonna be.
Just pay those off.
Two harder years, two difficult years, and then, um, you'll start seeing savings when compared to leasing.
Right, leasing is obviously continued, at least deferred purchase, you said, well, it looks like it at least waits two years. So basically, for the next two years we lease, then we start purchasing, that's when we hit the spike and then come back down to a, a, a lower plateau.
So, so three seventy-five, you're incoming class, you're freshman?
Freshman and, um, uh, staff.
Okay, so when you're leasing, aren't we gonna have to lease for freshmen and sophomores?
Uh.
I mean, I, do the.
So we've already counted the cost of the, the lease that's gonna roll forward?
Okay.
If that answers your question?
It does, thank you.
Using about a five percent inflation rate, the cost of the computers.
For the, for the computers, yes. Yes, for the computers. And there's actually, um, there's FY twenty-one, there's a bigger increase because there's rumors right now that Apple's not, it's gonna be getting away with some of their smaller screen sizes. So the prices could be jump, um, higher for, for twenty twenty-one, but it's kinda early to tell.
Or the price of technology could go down.
So maybe they might get rid of the eleven inch.
Not at the end of it.
Well, I, I guess that begs the question, is there better alternative, but perhaps not for tonight.
Oh, and also the interest cost, is that in addition to the costs up here or that's just broken out from the top?
So, so that's included in the front page, on the, and the second page in the detail, it has the interest rate projected.
Okay.
But it is, the, the interest costs, the interest payments are included in the front page.
In the top one, I see.
Yes, yeah, correct.
It looks like all the costs on the purchase versus the deferred purchase play out over the next four years. And if we, I mean, if we get to a point where we're splitting hairs a little bit, we could do a slightly different deferred purchase option where we did buy some.
Yes.
So that those numbers effectively were all even.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is just, this is just three options, but it could be, um, it could be reworked.
And clearly, look at the numbers, it's a short-term, long-term thing. I mean, obviously, the most fiscally responsible thing to do in the long term is buy the Mount Rec because you're gonna spend less money over the next ten years. Um, so the question though becomes, how much can we stomach this year and next year, right?
And I, I, I only had that reaction because buying, like, the way technology changes, like, planning for laptops the way ten years from now just seems, it's gonna be completely different. I, I don't know what, you know, you guess what they're gonna look like, right? I don't know.
That's true, we don't go with. Right, yeah.
Or are we in fact planning five years out now?
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, pardon the pun, but what if there's a quantum leap in computing technology one year to the next? Well, that's what Mary's gonna have to say.
Not what it is.
I mean, you're always gonna have those challenges, I think, at least we know we had.
You have to stick your fork in somewhere.
We, we have funds to start leaning into whatever the newest, latest, greatest thing is, um, so.
So, uh, um, I gotta ask this, and I, believe me, I'm, I'm sitting, am I the only one without a Mac here? But, but, uh, no, no, and I'm not advocating, like, is, is, um.
Yes.
Are schools tending to go to Chromebooks or anything like, I mean, like, what do you?
So, you know, Peter Kelly and I have had a lot of conversation on this, and I'll preface this by saying you hired someone in this position from an Apple district, so I come with the same bias that a lot of people around here have. Um, we are finding a couple of things, not that it shouldn't get looked at if you'd like us to. Um, the Apples are lasting us six years really solidly, really.
Okay.
In fact, there's a couple, I can't believe are still.
Don't jinx it.
Uh, yeah, don't jinx it, that's right. We, we need them right now until this happens. Um, and they give us a lot of functionality that a Chromebook is completely web-based. So kids only have what's available to the, them on the internet to work with. Um, the third piece, and Peter's keeping close to his colleagues in other districts, they're finding the, um, sustainability, the durability of the Chromebook is pretty minimal. So they're replacing them more frequently. What I don't think any district has longitudinally quite yet is if the frequency of replacements adds up to similar, how does it compare to the cost of the Apple? Um, I don't know. So, you know, I think for the moment, we're pretty believing that we're getting something that over time is economically a solid, really strong instructional product for our kids. So that, that's the short answer to that probably long question of what we might do on that discussion.
The, the durability argument's pretty clear, I think, to a lot of people.
Yeah.
In terms of the productivity and what's not web-based, are you referring to what Apple simply provides on their machines?
Absolutely.
Are we confident that students use that?
So that's, that's actually part of the, the strategic plan work on the instruction and the pedagogy and making sure that we're even at, offering kids opportunities to use that. And I think we've got a spectrum of that use right now. So whether it's anything, uh, we've had a lot of discussion on the minimal tools we need for special education adaptive tech because every student has a laptop that will read to them if they need it to and do a whole other bunch of adaptive pieces that now we buy very minimal, there's a little bit, but we buy pretty minimal adaptive technology. The tools I'd love to see us continue to flourish with kids is choice sets of using iMovie and a lot of those really, really strong math-based, uh, applications that are really productivity tools, creativity tools, um, things like that, so.
The thing that we don't, we haven't mentioned in this discussion, and I know Mary's working on a Windows computer.
It's my computer, it's not a choice for me.
It's what I'm working on, I didn't tell you.
It's my third one.
Jared is too.
To your point, it's my third one this year.
Third one this year.
And I don't know, you know, where, if there's a happy medium in there. I left that environment a while ago and use nothing but Macs and, and they just work. I mean, there's enough to do with kids around homework that has nothing to do with technology. Um, that the last thing we need is, you know, an hour, spend a night because the program's not working. This isn't doing something or, um, and I, you know, I mean, it's, so we've got a couple of machines at home that are six years old and are beaten to death and they're still, you know, running the latest operating system and have all the latest tools, so that's.
I have a daughter home on an eight-year-old Mac, so, speaking of not jinxing it, I probably should have thrown that out.
Don't tell her.
I have a, I need to back up a step.
Please.
To the, uh, line item budget. There's, there's a, it's mine, uh, NS seventy-five. Spent non-public tuitions, increases a million, one forty-four years, what is that?
Sure. And that's, I'm sorry, what was that, NS?
NS, uh, seventy-four, it's on page three.
Page three.
And it's about three hundred and three, three quarter of nine up from the bottom, you'll see it. It's the only million, whatever I did in the line, in the next to the last line, column.
NS seventy-four, and your question?
Why, why we're reducing it?
NS seventy-five, seventy.
Oh, I'm sorry, so NS seventy-five, um. Yeah, um, because we in the past were budgeting things out of, um, out of state tuitions, we didn't have any. Um, we were budgeting, um, uh, non-public tuitions, um, we didn't have any. But the biggest thing was, is what we were doing in the past, is we were taking circuit breaker out of this line in particular because it was always the largest. So what we did is the three, the three million, twenty-four thousand, um, is our obligation for next year, for collaborative tuitions. The nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for circuit breakers is its own line. So it's not necessarily a spike, but this is our actual costs for collaborative tuitions.
So it's a different way of counting.
So there was a, the number hasn't changed, don't you mind?
No.
So that increases nine hundred and fifty thousand less than the one point.
You'll see there's a line further down where the nine is in fact.
Nine fifteen, yeah.
So it was an offset that masked what was really happening.
Correct. Just harder to track what was circuit breaker and what wasn't.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Um, further up, uh, page one, uh, computer hardware, NS eight, four hundred and, just, I'm, I'm curious, what's, you know, what are, what are those, it's a significant amount of money every year that we're spending on computer hardware.
Yeah, that is where our leases and the one, and the, and the purchase for the laptops.
So that includes the lab, that's not machines away from what students are using, that's a line we've just been talking about.
There are some.
Biggest line we've just been talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's.
And I would, and I would say that if you look at the historic numbers, those don't necessarily reflect. It was, one of the ways we were getting to the bottom line, staying in the black, was using that technology number and not, and waiting to see if we could just spend. So part of why this technology question is becoming such a fairly urgent need is because we've not been keeping up with the technology needs that we have. So, um, the goal is to get a line that really holds the need and sustain.
Well, we certainly learned over the years, you know, that these big ticket items are better to keep pace with year to year than to try to.
So we are.
Use it as like, save some money one year.
We're playing with catch up.
Is it, we still haven't cleared a POE yet, ten years later.
And just to, to correct myself, we created a lease line. So originally that was, so the way that this line was, um, conducted, the budget is four hundred and nine thousand. It includes, um, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand for the replacement, what we're talking about. And then, um, an additional ten thousand for, um, new staff laptops. So that's the four oh nine, and then the lease, projected lease amount for next year is a hundred and eleven thousand, which is, um, NS eight, eight.
That's the remaining, yes. So if we went to a deferred purchase, that line ultimately would go away?
The lease, yes.
Yes, in two years.
Right. Right.
Yeah, right.
Or three, depending on what the deferred. It would seem to me that leveling that up, even though it's a little, it's going to take a little one half in the long run, negotiation, might be a better way to do this, especially while rates are relatively low.
What we brought to you to all figure out, what we're using.
You're saying leveling by leveling it out more than.
Basically, if you, if you, the difference between purchase and the deferred purchase in this year's budget is, the deferred purchase is two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars plus.
Right.
But in the fourth year, in FY23, the diff, well, in FY22, the difference is two hundred and five thousand dollars greater for the deferred purchase, and then a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars greater for the deferred purchase. So if you leased, if you.
You bought them.
If you leased less than is in the deferred purchase, right?
Well, you wouldn't have to do.
You're saying partial, so this coming year, buy some and lease some?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, you would, rather than go all one way or the other, you're going to fight for change.
Which we keep talking about.
And just level that up, because in the final, later years, it's all low.
Yeah.
Probably be an increase, but it wouldn't be four hundred and seven, it'd be three hundred, something, didn't want to split the difference.
It makes sense.
So when do we have a final budget required?
So, so, definitely in December, you need to vote a budget. So I think you've got options in terms of how you approach this, whether you debate some tonight and pick a direction, the public hearings after the Thanksgiving holiday, so you're going to have another discussion at that point. We're with the finance committee in both towns over the next five days, so I expect we'll have some anecdotal feedback. Concord's setting its final guideline on the twenty ninth, twenty ninth. Carlisle, I don't know if I know the final discussion, I know we're there next week, but I don't know their final discussion. So I, that's some of what I think you as a committee have to determine, is when you want to pick a number and say, this is our number, versus how much you want to hear the finance committee's delivery ahead of that.
And there's really three components we've got to include, right?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we've delivered you a level service budget, the numbers you're debating are not about level service, they're about the big ticket.
So.
Go ahead.
You said something, Jared, about we have the highest OPEB in the state, but we're.
Is giving us a negative outlook.
Look, I thought you were, I understand the high school building debt, I thought you were talking about, I heard that we shouldn't be adding new debt, new projects, new capital projects, and I.
I did, the report did say that, but they said substantial, substantial.
Yeah, compared to the, compared to the high school.
Not a, not so a million dollar or something, no, but if we took on a fifty million dollar project and still had low reserves, that would, that would not be the case.
Feelless, no, it's good.
Yeah, yes.
You said it, now maybe.
But you're, but you're.
Well, I didn't do.
Both, both from a budgeting standpoint and from a rating standpoint, decreasing the use of the E and D is critical.
It's really critical, because it has this other side to it, that in order to be sure you've got the revenue, we have to keep assuring that we're budgeting in a way that creates the revenue. So, for example, even in a tight year last year, we had to be sure we were closing with a certain amount to put back into E and D to even keep something afloat in there for the revenue to be available. Very clearly, and this was one of John's greatest panics last spring, was that at the almost seven hundred thousand dollar rate of revenue, we were going to run out of cash flow in two years' time. So there's really no option but to slow that down, and the question is how aggressively you want to do this. I think the good news is we've brought you a budget that allows you to make these choices versus a year ago, without the zero base, we weren't in that position, we were just trying to keep level service through E and D and all of that. So that's the good news, you have choices on how aggressive to be. Status quo isn't really an option, right?
And what's tendering, the more aggressive we are in lowering the E and D revenue, revenue from the E and D, the better, because the last thing we want to see is a, we do not want to lose our triple rate.
That's exactly.
Well, and also, I don't want to run out of cash.
I feel strongly.
Yeah.
There is that joke too. Racial matters, like, just, yeah.
I feel strongly that three fifty is almost, is the max that we should use out of there. If anything, we should be debating, do we use even less for revenue? But I certainly wouldn't want to increase the three fifty to using any more than that as revenue.
Sounds like being on a track to reduce that to over two years is sufficient for us to take us off the watch list ultimately. And, you know, we're, we're really, I mean, we're, it's all, for us, it's really all the same pot of money. I mean, the commitment needs to be that we, either we hear from the community that they would like to see us do both, maintain the ARC and bring the excess and deficiency in the line, or if it's up to us, then, you know, we bring the idea into the line and then commit to bring, to give back to the ARC aggressively at some point down the road. I mean, you know, we're, we're doing this, we were aggressively funding the ARC for three or four years because we had robbed it to, again, to try to bring, to get us back to level service and all that kind of stuff with a number that was, was going to get thumbs up for ten.
So you're leading right to what was going to be my next question, if E and D is the priority, and OPEB is a priority, but, but under question because how much can we defend right now? And going back to Jared and his promise of, I can come up with any number for you on the spot now, because this is all a calculator. If we kept E and D at three fifty, so I'm looking at your scenarios now, your first one has E and D at three fifty and OPEB fully funded, and your next one's shift E and D and OPEB in various ways. If we keep E and D at three fifty, but lower the OPEB contribution.
To scenario two.
To scenario two, to six hundred, say, where does that put us?
That would put us at a total overall increase of four point eight seven with debt, everything, I mean, without debt, everything I talk about is without debt.
Okay.
So four point eight seven total, Concord would be at four point five eight, Carlisle would be at five point seven seven. So just to remind you that debt is actually going to increase the.
Yeah, so same.
Yeah, so.
But that's not bringing it down.
Well, with debt, so with that.
We're just trying to do apples to apples, because the guideline number is without the debt.
Oh, okay, that was my next question, right.
So with debt, it would be four, three point four six total, three point one seven for Concord, four point three four for Carlisle.
So, I'm sorry, go back to the without debt, because that's, that's more pertinent to the guideline.
Now, that would.
Said, keeps us under.
It would be an overall increase of four point eight seven, so for Concord, it would be four point five eight, guideline was four point two seven, and.
Oh, what, two seven?
Four point two seven. And Carlisle was five point seven seven.
No, the guideline in Concord is four point two seven.
Okay, so we're still a little over at that, right? Gets us a lot.
Can you just say, what, what was the, what were your numbers? What did you plug in to get that?
Oh, my number is three fifty E and D usage.
Okay.
And OPEB down to six hundred.
Okay.
Which what that did is, from our original sheet, that decreased the budget by a hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Right.
One thing about, I just want to throw it out there, because it keeps rolling back in my head, we're using the reduction in debt service on our revenue, on our cost decreases line in the presentation, you do.
In, in the, by the one thousand, the three point four four percent, the overall, so the overall budget, including debt, in the general fund, is going at three point four four percent. The overall operating budget, and again, in the general fund, is four point six, four point sixteen percent. The reason why our numbers are different is because we're bringing additional revenue to the table. We're increasing check to seventy, check to seventy-one, interest in the salience revenue. Had we have done apples to apples, it would have been a little bit higher, but we've identified through the zero base, you know, new revenues that we can bring forward. And obviously, state agents are going up a little bit.
I just want to be careful in the way we describe the, because debt service is going to be down every year.
Right.
And if I'm, if I'm looking at this from the outside and I, and I see, oh, well, okay, we had a two hundred thousand dollar reduction in debt service, and we used it to, for increases in spending.
Yeah.
You know, ultimately, we, you know, we've used up all of the, and, and my, this comes from having spent time in another district where everything was about overrides, and operational overrides and debt service overrides, and, you know, capital overrides are easier to get past, even though they were greater amounts of money, but the expectation in everybody's mind was they're going to roll off. And, you know, the expectation here will be that they're going to roll off. And we're also going to be coming to the taxpayers in Concord, most likely, unless there's a request for an increase in debt service relative to the overall tax. I'm just, I'm sensitive to that, I think we need to be.
Just so, you know, what we do is we take debt right off the top, so we know what our debt is, that is not part of the operating, and then we work with the other, you know, three hundred, three hundred lots. So we, we don't consider debt as part of our savings. Overall, it is, but that's why I'm showing it without debt.
So I'm hearing that our top priority is E and D, that's fair to say, is that a consensus?
I agree.
So then, my next question is, between OPEB and laptops, is OPEB the next priority?
So. I'm not convinced of that yet, and I'd like to see another laptop scenario before we go any further.
Yeah, I like Molly's idea of keeping it out somehow, so that complicate your life overly.
No, I mean, when you look at the sheet, we can, we can do a combination of leasing and purchasing to give any number between the four hundred seventy-seven thousand and two hundred fifty-five thousand. At that point, it's just how many machines are being purchased versus leased, or we can, any, any number in between that.
But if you were trying to calculate it out, in my pea brain, it would basically be the difference has got to go one direction or the other?
Yes, so if we, if we.
The total difference.
If we, if we leased more, yes, over the long term, leasing more will add, will add a cost over the long term.
So we've got to go back and forth into how many we lease and how many we buy.
Yeah, but the difference during purchase and deferred purchase rate, you know, over a ten-year period of time, and we've already talked about, that's a long time in technology.
Yeah.
Is seventy, seventy-one thousand dollars. So, you know, it's.
Right, over ten years.
Over ten years, it's really not.
Yeah. Right, so I was assuming when you were saying even out of the first couple of years, that that's part of deferred purchase, that over the next couple of years, a few years somehow, we, we have a mix of purchasing and leasing, which gets us to.
Basically, deferred purchase.
Right, which gets us to fully purchasing within the next few years.
Which is really small money compared to.
What you were mentioning?
Yeah, I mean, all it's going to do is change, it's going to change your overall budget by a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, not even, it's at seventy, and then not after the third year.
It's two twenty-two is the swing in the first year of training, all purchases.
Why we decided by ourselves.
For this current.
Right.
Well, we could do that, we're going to, I mean, again, that's something we need all the time, which is other conversations.
So I don't think, I think they're, I don't think they're too really, they're too different, I don't, doesn't seem like an either or conversation.
Right.
The laptops are the, I mean, the OPEB is, I mean, every year, we have a conversation about OPEB, and it's the one, you know, that and E and D are the fungible items when it comes down to the tail end of what we're doing. And we know, we've been told every year, that using as much of E and D for revenue as we have been is going to hurt us, and Moody's taught us that.
Exactly.
In no uncertain terms. And so we would be derelict, I think, if we didn't address that.
Well, then, so I think, and I think everyone agrees, so we do the, this is more aggressive plan, and maybe we do scenario two as in OPEB, because we like to get as close as we can, but recognizing it's still a little bit above what's been the tentative guideline. We know that that's a place, and why we've gotten to that place, maybe, you know, a little bit of a, not to not do it eventually, but a pause on fully, meaning the ARC while we get the E and D.
So you're suggesting OPEB as.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And sort of address it that way and see, you know, I mean, it's, it's clearly what we.
I think it will also be interesting on Thursday night to get feedback from, finance committee also get feedback from, it's like more than other, other town members, because of the fact that OPEB is something that other groups of towns had to care about a lot. But I do think if the priority is to bring the overall number down, then of those three places, E and D I wouldn't touch. The laptops, maybe we can adjust it a little with that plan, and then, and then we're at OPEB, that's, that's really the way to bring the number down, if we need to bring it down. Right. What's that?
I think it sounds okay. This is, this is the year, it feels like this is the year to be aggressive, right? Next year.
Aggressive about.
About the E and D.
Yeah, definitely.
Like, next year is because they're full on their conversation.
Well, I think it's, we ought to have that conversation with FinCon about OPEB.
No.
Yeah. And get their feedback.
Concord, ten treasure, and Carlisle, ten treasure. You know, maybe the, the feeling is, okay, well, let's be a little higher and make sure we keep that on track, because we've worked so hard to get it to where it is.
And if that's the case, it'll just keep our number higher.
So I think, I think that, I think every time we have this conversation, I'd say, we should let other people be in on that decision.
Yep.
Because, you know, it is, it's not, it's not a decision about circuits.
Totally a financial, exactly, yeah.
But we're taking care of our retirees too.
No, absolutely.
Don't forget about that, I mean, that's obviously the whole purpose.
No, I mean, and there are some people in the community who would say, no, fund OPEB completely, roll the dice with E and D, or if you're not going to borrow any more money here, so what it's a matter of your.
I think the rating is, is clearly in our minds, it sounds like.
I think the cash.
Rating is cash, we need to have.
And we have a deadline, I mean, we have eighteen months to two years, it's not like five years, eight years, ten years.
I'd be more, I'd really be more concerned about if, if we had a rating decrease, would it affect Concord and Carlisle's rate, and that's where.
Could easily.
That's the issue.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we've, we've, you know, we've borrowed our big nut for twenty years.
Right. But we know Concord's going to be borrowing, we don't want to keep Carlisle from borrowing at the end of the year.
One of the things I need to go back and check my notes on, I can bring it to the finance committee, is that Moody wanted a plan from us, just sort of a plan as to where we're going to expect to be. So I'll, I'll do a little more research on that, bring this to the finance committee.
That'd be great.
That'd be good.
Could you, in fact, involves a call to Moody's, maybe even if it doesn't, it would be good, it would be helpful to have some understanding of the relationship between our rate and that of Concord and Carlisle.
That's a good point, yeah.
You know, what, would that have any dramatic effect?
Because it's almost in tax debt, must, right? Or they just don't want to have it, right?
I mean, yes and no, I know that because of the strong bond ratings of the two towns, that helps us, but also, if we go down, it affects them as well.
Right, of course.
But I know that that's a big, what they look at is basically, if you cannot afford your debts, do the two towns that are part of your representation, can they cover your expenses? And I know that, so that's a big weight, that, because they're so financially sound. And just as, just so you know too, another thing, I, the. And just as, just so you know too, another thing, I, um, the, the guideline number, whether we're getting there or not, between the OPEP, the E and D, um, the replacement cycle, to get roughly to the four point two seven, if that's the goal, would be about two hundred and sixty-six thousand. So that's where we're, that's where we're at right now.
From where?
From, from our recommendation,
From the line end of,
Which includes the, um, the full amount of the purchase of laptops, E and D at three fifty, and, um, fully funded E and D R. So any combination of that, two hundred and sixty-six thousand is roughly four point two seven percent of Concord.
And, and one other thing I think that's important to point out is that the, the guideline is a preliminary number.
Yep.
There were, if I recall correctly, nine members, and it was a five-three-one vote. So it wasn't nine-zero unanimous, but, you know, so they will have further discussions, and, uh, so we're obviously going to hear some of that in a couple of days, which will be interesting.
Does this give you both what, what we've just discussed so far, give you both what you need for tonight?
It really is. Yes, I think so.
Okay.
I don't think there's much for us to do between now and two weeks from now.
Right.
Other than if you have other scenarios for us to run.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say if we could pull off scenario one, that would be great. So I would not, you know, so I would try and support.
The recommended budget you got from me is scenario one, I actually remind you.
Yeah, I want to, I want to support that.
And that's three fifty and six eighty-five, is that correct?
Seven eighty-five.
Seven eighty-five, thank you.
It's, it's, it's the recommended, correct, yeah, arc.
Yep.
Not looking at the, it is,
And fully purchasing.
It's the arc and holding the line.
Yep, I mean, that's, that's the most long-term.
I'm anxious to get out of the kick the can mode and just clean this up and have a sustainable.
Did that number, does that number include a straight-up purchase in the,
Yes, it does.
So there's a hundred thousand dollars there that we can do.
Yes.
Maybe reduce.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Or you can go to the, bigger firm.
Okay, so we're done on the budget for now?
I think so. Good.
Uh, next item is virtual school day for corporate?
Yes.
It's good to be safe.
Yeah. Don't expect decisions or answers tonight, I just need input, so. Um, just context on where we are in this discussion of virtual school days. This is a conversation we actually started probably at the tail end of last winter, as we were watching dates roll into late June for schools to still be in session after seven cancellations. Um, we are not alone in this conversation, as Bob mentioned, there's a wide, wide number of districts trying to figure out how we pursue options that are more flexible, so we're not making up days one to one. Um, we've opened a conversation here with the CTA and CCTA, as well as broader-based conversations with the staff, um, different meetings that have been used for this discussion, including Kristen's used her elementary leadership, um, representation to have discussions. And I'll be honest, the good news when you gather lots of feedback is you have lots of input. The challenge when you gather lots of feedback is you might not have consensus. I'm, I'm bringing to you sort of the range of topic, range of ideas that have come to the table. Ultimately, you are the approvers of this process, the state has abdicated it to local control, we have to file it with them, but that's an after-the-fact discussion. Um, I don't want to rush it, but I also don't want to stall so much, we don't get any progress this year. So I'm going to just talk through where we're at with our ide- and I'm going to say, these are ideas, there should be a big draft stamped on everything I'm about to say, because it's really a status report more than this is anything else. What I decided didn't make sense was for me to keep moving towards a plan without input from all of you, who might then give me another round of input, didn't make any sense, so. Your in-the-middle part of the process here is, is the point for tonight. I don't think if we miss the winter that's imminent here, that that's a big deal. I think we can put it in place whenever the time is right, that we've come to agreement on what this is. So, I would love to see us get one or two under our belts this year as a pilot, just to see how it works. Uh, not, not to rush it though, because we think it might snow, I'm going to pretend I didn't hear Friday this morning.
Yeah, that's right.
No, 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 no.
Sleeping, still, right, it's,
Wait till tomorrow. So I don't think we're missing, if we miss the first round of winter, I don't think we're done for the year on this discussion, is my, is my point. So let me talk you through where we are, though, I take all sorts of questions and comments, um. Again, with, with multiple perspectives, I'm going to give you some of the, um, places we're in sync and places that we're not completely in sync. Um, we've broken this out based on what each, uh, member would be doing on a given day that we're considering, um, as a virtual day. So for the students, our current discussion for the elementary kids would include thirty minutes of reading, uh, potentially a choice board that would allow them to choose among the board, uh, with a mixed set of ideas of, one thing we talked some about is not having them just glued to computers all day, so, um, or over the course of the time, they have to do the activities, having a choice of activities that are technical and some not. Um, all of these ideas for the students and the staff are going to have windows of time for completion to them. A lot of discussion we've had so far has been about the fact that sometimes on a snow day, kids are babysitting, adults are home with kids who don't have any place to go, and other things are meaning they don't have the opportunity to sit at a laptop, so, at that prescribed time, so we're trying to build flexible ideas. Um, we're talking a lot too on accountability and monitoring of all of this, so for the elementary kids, that's easy, because they own their twenty-some kids, and that's all they need to concern themselves with. Um, right now, we're suggesting that if you don't complete the assignments, you'd be considered absent. So that's, that's room for discussion, whether that's, I don't know how else anyone else would be considered absent if it's not that. Otherwise, it's about whether do they, um, you know, not have points for completion, for the older kids, it becomes, could it impact their grades, is some of the others.
Is there not a participation threshold?
In terms of how many kids have to do this, not that we've seen from the state, I,
Who thought there was?
Not that I've seen. There's certainly a amount we would, we would, we might set a threshold, or we would decide this isn't working, I would expect.
Aside from the fact that I usually like to drink hot chocolate and watch kids go to the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's in here too, we're going to get to that. At least for in here too.
So, the state will give us credit for a day if there's thirty minutes reading and,
They're, they've, I think they've come to the mindset that to some extent, the one-eighty needs to be a little more flexible than it is, and this is their way to allow us flexibility without actually changing the requirement, that none of us think we're replacing a typical school day.
Better, we, don't we then put pressure on our ability, it's, it's a high school. Don't we then put pressure on our ability to get through the curriculum?
Okay, that's my segue to this next set of options for the secondary kids. Uh, we are continuing to discuss this approach, so the original, one idea has been thirty minutes from each teacher on content to their courses in Google Classroom. Um, that also has an option that sits aside of it, which could be a broader-based, universal assignment that all kids at the high school or all kids at the middle school complete. I think there's pros and cons to each, we can debate all of those if you'd like. Um, so we're still in the throes of that conversation, to be significantly, um, to say the least. Again, there'd have to be a window of completion, whichever way that goes, um, because we might have kids who cannot complete it during that actual day. The, the other side of that is monitoring and accountability, I think if we were to have it based on the Google Classroom side, it would be individual teachers monitoring it based on what they assign. If it's a broader-based, one idea is going to look at the advisory block and use those advisors to monitor completion. Um, one of the reasons we're limiting the number of days is the course completion mode, and some of the discussion we've had is June makeup days don't quite offer the same pace of course completion anyway, it's, it's altered no matter which way we went, so. We don't have consensus on this, yeah.
Well, I, I was, I'm a little confused by the long tail and when the work can be completed, I mean, it's, we're not asking students to do as much as they would do if they had a full day of school, yet we're giving them,
Right, we, we've had quite a bit of feedback about kids, especially the older kids, who might be babysitting for younger kids while parents are still working, and all sorts of other scenarios, well, power is a different discussion, I think power perhaps puts all of this into another category. So, the responsibilities of the kids on certain snow days is what led to that conversation of flexibility. I haven't seen too many districts that haven't do the next day for those reasons, um, but this is all up for discussion, this is stats.
One of my questions of, of the other districts that you've spoken to and looked at, what are the most, I guess, popular plans? What are the ones that you, that you, or I guess, I know you got a lot of feedback, but what are the ones that generally you thought you'd like to emulate? And things that you'd like to avoid in those plans?
We've seen a lot of universal assignments in the other districts, but again, these are the really front early runners, uh, Westford and Wakefield have been way ahead. Um, they have gone to uni- if you go online, you can see all of the assignments, the kids can see their assignments now. It's that universal and not timely in terms of what the kids are going to be doing, so. That's been the model, the Google Classroom was more of an internal dialogue we were having because of the concern of our loss of course instruction time.
Making the town work, I'll. Especially the high schools.
Actually, we're speaking at the high school, right, when they, they do, we do our snow day watch, and the teachers all say, right, if we have a snow day, this is what I want you to do.
Certainly some of them are doing that now, yes.
Well, they do, so, can I just ask a real basic question?
Sure.
Secondary school?
Well, that's my category versus, that's middle and high school.
So it is middle and high school, okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yeah. In terms of the staff and the faculty, and I'll say this has been another ongoing discussion, um, as to what responsibilities would be. Uh, we definitely had feedback from teachers that they often have responsibilities on snow days because their kids are home, things like that. Um, one of the bigger discussions we've had as of the last two weeks has been the hourly employees and, school closures without a makeup day is essentially a loss of pay for those folks, and I have to commend the, um, teacher unions for being so concerned about how this all plays out for some of our hourly people. So the idea that, um, we got excited about, which is still in its infancy and not fully vetted, but, uh, is to create really truly a pre-K twelve professional development day, so we would flip the professional development, flip us the way we in jargon, talked about providing them online options for PD. And, um, then there'd be an opportunity to validly pay folks if, the idea we really started to enjoy was cultural competency. One of our greatest challenges is reaching some of our hourly people who are in direct communication with kids, bus drivers, cafeteria. Training opportunities for them are often very limited, so we were not only thinking an option to pay them felt good in terms of their stability, but also to make progress in a group that we've had a harder time reaching, so.
Actually, kids are a little hard.
So this is meant primarily for our,
Well, we, well, we, well, it all depends on what you do in the other scenarios, so if the middle and high school people have to be on Google Classroom for some of those course assignments, then it's hard to ask them to also do the PD. The elementary people may have more flexibility, so we love the idea, we are starting to love the idea of a pre-K twelve full district PD day, uh, but that would essentially drive you probably to the universal assignments, because the Google Classroom and the PD would be more than we're asking out of the people.
And, well, really, there's no, there's no statutory requirement for faculty to make that up.
There's no statutory requirement, I will remind you, it's a paid day.
Understand.
There's no requirement, no, it's student hours that count.
But they're paid to June thirty, regardless.
They're paid for a hundred and eighty-five days. This is all for you to discuss, how you want to move things around.
One of my difficulties with this is it seems like our different scenarios address very different needs or problems.
Yeah, that's why you're getting my laundry list of mixed messages.
What does she send us?
That's what I read, huh, I'm going to bring that my,
She doesn't do that very often.
I don't know, I, I know.
Usually you're more decisive than this.
Well, I, I needed your, really, I was about to get decisive, and then I was worried you were going to swing me another way, so I'm here before I get decisive. Because we have gotten a lot of input, I'm glad for that. Amount of virtual days versus traditional days, clear, there was a clear message that we don't want all virtual days, we, we like a little break it gives us to have hot chocolate and all of that.
While the kids clean the driveway.
While the kids clean the driveway. What we haven't come totally to agreement on is when the virtual would kick in, we had been working on a two-day traditional before we got the virtual in, another was to, um, do all five traditional bef- and then the virtual is just your way to prevent the school year from getting longer than the five. Um, one of my concerns is we do that right now, the chance of piloting a day, you know, probably gets more minimal the longer out you go, so. And it maybe we don't have to decide that this year, maybe we pick a point in time where we try it, um, and say, that's the one day we're going to do. So that's another moving piece. Uh, the, I, I suppose the one thing we all agreed on is that ultimately, this is all my decision at a four o'clock in the morning timeframe, if I need to make that decision, which I'm really excited to have one more thing to think about, um.
Jared's probably, I think.
Yeah, Jared will be up there, but, uh, so.
He has nothing to do now, there's none of the budgets.
So the attempt to get some sort of, something predictable is only as good as whether the conditions allow for it, so if we were to say the fourth day was going to be virtual, power would have to be intact and,
Yeah.
Some other things that make that a realistic option.
So, so Lori, for a minute, pretend that our instructional objectives were all that mattered, although there's a lot of factors for a lot of families and a lot of staff. But imagine instructional outcomes were most important. Does, does virtual allow us to do anything we can't do otherwise, does it afford us an opportunity in some interesting way?
Um, I think I know where you're going, I think right now it at least gives us a way to maintain kids when we've got days going, whether we're, I, we're not going to give them a lot of new content, especially the younger kids, but,
But maybe a reinforcing day?
Reinforcing practice, I think, uh, that's, I think, part of the high school discussion, are we trying to move new content without, in a virtual environment, or are we looking at a universal, um, project that allows us to teach things we're having a hard time getting in? We've got like digital literacy work that we've been talking about doing, short of a bit of advisory, we're having a hard time doing the scale and scope of that work that we would like to be doing, so that's a very different flavor than the academic, but we think equally is important in the digital world our kids are living, so. I can come at that from both sides.
That sounds very ideal, and it strikes me that there's a reason why districts do this universal assignment, so they've always got something in the can ready to go, because nobody's going to design the day at four AM after they hear from us.
That, well, that's one of the discussion points, is there's an on-demand piece for teachers if they're building out a Google Classroom, whether that's in a demand they can, because of how they build their courses anyway, it's not as much of a four AM discussion as it might be otherwise. My personal concern, and this is going to be the student wellness piece, I think teachers might aim for thirty minutes on each class, and if they overshoot without knowing it, um, we could end up with hours of homework for kids, and I just want to be sure we don't create that environment either, so.
Twenty minutes for me might be an hour for you.
Yeah, I mean, that's the challenge, is as an elementary teacher, as you work for home, you have a range of how long it takes kids to do things.
So it's usually that the, um, the purpose is so we don't get way into, you know, Pushing up to Fourth of July, right? And so, what teachers normally do is pull off teaching what they have to teach in the days that they're in school, right now.
Right.
So if we were trying to avoid these really late, um, getting out, and our goal is to try one or two, that suggests to me that we decide it's one or it's two, and it's on the, candidly, I think it should be the third snow day if there's no power outage, and the fourth, or the third and the fifth, and we have a universal something, whether it's digital literacy or something that we have prepared well in advance, so no teacher has to go, oh, shoot, I got to get this stuff organized for, something that, that's the sort of flavor of what I'm hearing.
Yeah, you're saying exactly what I was just thinking.
I mean, I think the, the work has gotten done, I mean, it's probably been more challenging when we have five and six, it is for many teachers, I don't think in high school more than anything. But having an elementary school kid read, or have all the kids read for thirty minutes is a great thing, or, you know, those kinds of things that can be more universal and feel academic, but also not be burdensome, and, and that's what, that's what I'm looking to do, and we're, we're doing it as a pilot, just give it a whirl, and see where, you know.
Because as you, as you said, the, the days at the end of June don't really reap you anything anyway. Because as you, as you said, the, the days at the end of June don't really reap you anything anyway.
Not the same as the day that would happen in the middle of January now.
I also agree that if we want to get some information on this, we need to plan it so that we do pilot these this year. I, I wouldn't want to see us saying the sixth and seventh day because we might not get any information for years. I mean, knock on wood, you never know. But, but I would like to know that if we're gonna, if, if we really want to know about this, that we want to move forward and pilot it. And I would like to see it be, you know, the third day at the latest, if not the second even, just so that we know we have a, you know, second and fourth even. Or so, third and fourth, whatever, but so that we have a good chance of getting those pilot days in. And I was gonna, about to ask a similar question to Cory. And you partially answered it with the digital literacy idea. But along the idea of the universal, are there other things that, that jump out? That is, that are something that are overreaching that we're trying to address anyway? Are there, there are multiple ideas for that? Because if so, that seems like a, a natural place to go to me.
Day service, go shovel your neighbors' stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
I mean, all of our work and writing always leads itself to asking kids to write different kinds of experiences or arguments or whatever's appropriate to the purposes we have are always valuable.
Right.
For whatever we've been working on.
That's the best way to shovel.
We haven't, we haven't brought in this list yet because without that being the direction, we haven't spent the time to keep going.
Yeah, because I would think.
But there's always a list of those ideas.
I would, I would rely on that being the teacher's work of, you know, or collective. The kinds of ideas they could be that are overly burdensome, but also are productive and, you know, you accomplish something in the time.
Of course.
Is there a big discrepancy between feedback from math and science faculty versus arts and humanities on this relative to being able to get done what they need to get done?
I would say the biggest discrepancy are the AP teachers more than anybody else. I don't know if we have the data down to that level of minutia, but those are always the folks whose curriculum keeps moving regardless of the calendar, so.
So, two, go ahead.
I just, so I asked my question about secondary, because we have to remember we have two districts here, right? And two teacher unions.
Of course.
So, I, like I, are there, have we ever had days where K-8, we went to school and the high school day never runs through?
Oh, definitely we have. Yes. It, I've, it told we have. I haven't called one yet.
Yes, we have.
We had, and I know, we've had Carlisle versus Concord.
That might seem.
I just want to make.
Well, if there was a building issue, like if we all of a sudden had a building issue at the high school.
You lose power at my.
Right, exactly. You can't run school. We would still keep CPS open.
And it, like.
And Mary, the only reason this got put together is because it's, it was a mindset of the coursework could, because of how the day is configured, but it can be split up.
But we might, I guess, like, would we make different decisions for, might you, I don't know.
I know there was a day last year, there, people thought I should have made different decisions and delayed a start into high school. And Concord kept open on time and I didn't. It was the very first call I made, so I, I didn't. But I think there's always a window for that, yeah.
Just, that's, I just, you know, think of like, might we suggest that the, if we're gonna pilot it the third day, we do that for all the whole district?
Right, right. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we just say it differently.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, the whole Carlisle factor of.
Yeah, no, when we make a decision about the day, we definitely think of it as two different districts, so.
So, Mary, has Carlisle discussed this issue?
Yes.
Our is together. We're ready for pilot.
You are ready for pilot.
The idea is like, let's do one day, see the results. Same, same kind of test.
I like the day two and day four idea.
Yeah, I think it should be separate so we have time to discuss.
I just thought that if we put it together, time for day two.
If they come that quick, it doesn't last a few days.
The reason I said three and five is because when you get them, they're kind of fun and they're nice. When you get to the third one, you're like.
I'm already like.
The third one might be two weeks after the second.
I'm just saying. Give the kids the enjoyment of a couple of snow days first.
And the teachers' main job.
But in order for this to work, you have to realize that you may end up getting days with no power. So, you want to use one of these chips early in case the next three have no power because then you can't use them anyway.
I want to back up a little bit. Two questions. One, do you anticipate any difficulty with the MOUs that would be necessary to make this happen? You've got various opinions.
I hope not. I, I am express, I'm sharing with you two sets of opinion at this point. I think they're all interested enough in getting a try at this that we can settle on something for pilot work. That would be my expectation.
Secondly, what's the nature of the state guidelines on this other than tell us what you're gonna do?
That's it.
That's it. That's a lot of latitude.
No, they had years, probably three years ago, you had to submit your plan and actually get approval. As the winters significantly got worse, the message became local control, send us your plan.
Seems a cost to do it, right?
Yeah.
Too bad they haven't been more help.
Yeah. I think you've given me enough to go back and know what direction.
Keep the conversation.
Yeah, keep the conversation.
And overall, I'm so glad we're having this conversation.
Absolutely.
I mean, this is great to be looking at.
And was there any noteworthy feedback from teachers besides what we've already discussed?
Um, any noteworthy?
All noteworthy.
No, no, it's not, but besides what we've discussed.
I don't think besides what we've already discussed. I mean, we've had multiple surveys, lots of different discussions. It's a lot of, I think that unknown is the biggest challenge right now, which is why I've decided just, let's get a pilot day under our belt and get a better feel for how this works. Because we get us, we get a lot of what ifs and what ifs and what ifs. And I, naturally, that is gonna happen, but until we get a little bit of fact under our belts, it's hard to get out of the what ifs.
Yeah, right. Well, to your point about the power, it could be that the power's out on the day two and comes back on day three. We still can't get out.
Right.
And you can go on and on about, you know, one scenario.
I just have to jump. Teachers don't have power, the kids do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you just try it.
And the other part that hasn't happened because without a plan, I didn't do much of this other than drop it in newsletters without detail. We haven't heard from the parent community yet, so I'm hoping it's well received, but.
We get mixed reviews. We have some parents who are like, no, this is my kid's day off.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, and they can't, well, because we have a younger population, some younger population.
All right, so let me take that feedback. I'll go back and work with the other folks and try to have a tighter, tighter version for you, hopefully in two weeks.
Great. Thanks for doing this.
Yeah, that's interesting. Up to all business, campus project updates.
Yeah.
So, the failed drainage project is ready to go with Jim Mahata construction. We are ready, waiting for a break in the weather so we can begin the project. Brian is followed up with Jim Hatta today, so I'll find out where he is on that. The curb modifications for the access to the nurses' room is underway. Brian will be working with GPR on the design beginning this week. It will take approximately two weeks for the survey and design. Once the design is complete, we can solicit quotations for the project, seeing as it is below the COB threshold. Brian reviewed the moving of the ductwork for the spray booth with the engineer on Friday. They will be sending a proposal for the design specs so we can solicit quotations. Design, the design cost will be approximately $2,000 and the work is projected to cost about $10,000 to $15,000. We are waiting for BLW to respond with a proposal on this. And lastly, the mixing valves are also reviewed on Friday. They have been industry, there have been industry changes to the valve. And Brian asked BLW to modify the drawings to show electronic mixing valves in lieu of the mechanical valves. Mechanical valves are approximately the same cost and they require a spare thermostatic cartridge and maintenance every six months. Whereas the electronic valves require little to no maintenance. Brian's waiting for BLW to respond with those changes.
To the design.
And I have been, just so you know, in touch with Gail. So, everything seems to, to be running smoothly and no issues with them.
And they're here in a couple of weeks.
They have a 27?
No, twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty is my.
A week from today.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Yeah.
I have that too.
We're hoping to.
Can everybody be there?
Full team, right. Here, two to four, right?
Here.
Here.
What is that?
Two o'clock on Tuesday.
That's, we, we, we talked about it in our last meeting. We're gonna post it as a school commi, full school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Good idea.
So, it's two.
I text you a little bit about it.
The twentieth?
Twentieth.
Twenty at the two o'clock and it's for.
Two o'clock here.
Next, next year's.
So, is it technically a building, the committee meeting?
The oversight meeting.
We posted it as an oversight meeting and a joint meeting. Creative. So, you can all, all talk.
I think, I think it's an oversight meeting.
It may never.
We have to put it right. We have to put it in the joint meetings a week and all participate.
Mary, I can't do it.
Okay, are we done with this item? So, we'll go to next, to new business, Q5 update.
Yeah, this actually loops into the March Professional Day. Mike did a nice job of summarizing all of it for you in a memo. Q5 and the feedback that we had from the staff and discussions since then, we decided to go to a one-week Q5 model. A lot of the feedback we had was about the, the challenge of the preparation and demand of Q5 plus the demand of the end of the school year and making sure that was all a doable workload for teachers. So, what the request is that we go to the four-day Q5 program. And we'd like to look at having the Professional Day back at the end of the school year. So, teachers have that flexibility in finishing exams, grading, report cards, all the other work that has to be done. You'll remember that last year when we put the March day in, it was because we were in preparation for Q5. So, it makes sense that we would relook at it and say, we are ready for Q5. We don't need the Preparation Day. We'd like to offer the teachers the same opportunities as the CPS teachers have to, to wrap their year up in a little less stressful way. So, that is the request and the, and the update to Q5 is that you'd consider moving the March Professional Day to the end of June.
You scared, but that makes sense.
Do you like?
Good question.
I think you would have to vote it if you're gonna change the calendar.
Do you want to vote it tonight so we can get word out to?
Yeah, if you're ready to.
Do you have any language?
I just have a quick.
I don't. I think we can put it.
Just a quick question on Q5, which I should have asked before. How come a week is four days versus the five?
Right, so we had, that's a good question. And that morphed a number of times last year. Honestly, part of what happened, it loops back to the snow day conversation. Initially, Q5 was gonna be two five-day weeks for 10 days. By the time we had so much snow and delay, then we decided to go with an eight-day Q5 option, which I think actually we all decided the four-day sessions were a really nice sweet spot in terms of kids getting time and depth. But it allowed us to not have a full week either. So, I think because we saw such a success with the four-day model and we want to preserve the integrity of that. And so, going to the one week was a matter of going to the four-week, four-day session and not going to five. There was just a, a good, a good point with the four days that allowed for engagement and depth, but not to the point where you wished you had moved on.
Where it was too.
Yes.
Too much of a effort.
Yeah, the four days left everybody in a really good place of completion and satisfaction without feeling like, oh, we're still here, so.
Got it, yeah.
I'll make a motion to move the March Professional Day to, to Professional Day.
Yes.
March Professional Day to June, to the end of, to the end of Q5 for the region.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
School is in session now on March 11th.
Yeah, you get to deliver that.
Yeah, we can.
That's the Q5 question.
It's the longest one.
Could take, kids with the eight days, could they take two or three?
They could take up to four. They could take two half-days, sessions each, for each week, or they could take a full day or, so they could mix and match.
So, now they'll have an option for two potentially?
For two, as many as two or something that runs every day for the full.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna vote a few things here. So, I would like a motion that the Concord School Committee votes to accept a wraparound tree bench from the Thoreau School PTG in honor of Karen Pettyjohn, who retired as a school librarian last year.
Move.
Awesome. Second.
With praise for her years of service.
Yes.
All right, any questions about that? All those in favor? Any opposed? The pass is unanimous.
So, could I have a motion to vote to accept the CF grant for CCHS Writing Symposium?
So, move.
Second.
Further discussion? All of the paper?
Hi. Yes, and to, is it be the prep to, yeah. That should be it.
I, I would hope that we get something reported out on that. It sounds like a really.
Oh, sure. That sounds awesome.
Initiative.
I'll make a motion to approve the CMS eighth grade trip to DC.
Second. Any discussion? No questions.
Should we have a discussion about this or?
I don't think there's too much to discuss other than we forgot to give you the full agenda of the three days. You've got big picture information, but it's, you do have it, okay, good. It was not a printed pack.
It was all, it was all well outlined. We just.
Yeah, it's very thoroughly.
The only question I had was, is the train, bus options still being made?
I think we're going to buses, but.
Having, being a parent of this, we haven't been told. I think we just took the survey. I don't know if a decision's been made.
Train and plane are about the same amount of money for those people that think it's cheaper.
Yeah, I don't know that it's been settled. Like, last I talked to Justin, it was leaving towards a bus system.
Yeah.
Any other, any major changes from last year or the past?
Can all those in favor?
I am, that's, that's.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, come on, right. It's starting on Janus.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Now you can go.
Can I have a motion to?
That's your.
No, I have a question. It says here, it says here on November 29th that the school committee workshop is at 6:30 PM. I thought it was at four. I would love it to be at 6:30.
Is it four?
Oh, sorry.
Which one is it?
The 29th, the school committee workshop, which will be on opening law, possibly some superintendent. It's at four o'clock.
It's at four.
Is this the one you were working on?
It's all right.
Yes. You got that? That's four and seven, right? It's the 29th.
Yeah, we've got the finish.
And we just said that Fincom later is the final deadline. And those of us for the eighth grader, seven o'clock is also the information meeting in Washington, Tennessee. So, I'm gonna have to break out of our workshop a little early.
Situation.
Hey, I did a doodle.
So, we might, so, our open meeting law workshop is five to seven. Can we?
Ends at seven.
It sounds.
Are you talking about workshop?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh.
Our open meeting law workshop, we have it at four to seven. It sounds like several people have seven.
So, I'll, I'll just tell you, I, the woman who I'm working with is only aware that we're starting at four. So, we could adjust. I'm also looking at the superintendent.
So, we can end by 6:30, so.
Yes, so, well, yes, I already knew that. I'm sorry. Now I'm with you.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's, I'm gonna confer with her. I have her back door, but we'll make.
Glad I brought that.
Is there a command?
So glad.
They're gonna set the guideline, two or three hours on each meeting.
Right.
Or which one? Twenty, twenty-one and a.
Trade.
Yeah, really.
Exactly.
Right.
Perfect. So, we are here in time for four o'clock. Four o'clock on January. An hour on each.
All right.
Perfect. Definitely. Okay, good. All right.
So, now we feel all right if we do now?
No, made the motion. Motion's to be made.
Would you feel good if that could be?
No, no one made a motion.
I would like to move.
I have a reciting meeting in Georgia.
Second.